She's trying.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Grabbed him.
Just don't start throwing your chair.
Okay, it's time to start our meeting?
I haven't done it for a long time, but I could start again.
Okay. Want to call the meeting to order Thursday, April 27, 2017. And our roll call shows that all of our trustees are present except for Veronica Gallardo, and I believe she'll be here shortly. Welcome. We have a happy-looking group out there in the audience. Thanks for coming. And I know we have a number of fun things on the agenda, so I'm sure you're there for First off, are we going to do the longevity?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First off, our longevity recognitions.
So, for those that don't know, that are in the audience or watching this via YouTube, the Santa Barbara City College has a long tradition of recognizing its employees at the board meetings for longevity. And we have two individuals this evening to recognize. The first one is Jose Martinez. For 20 years, he's in the Community Education Center, he's the Community Education Center Coordinator, and we have Dean Melissa Moreno here to give us some comments. Melissa?
Chair, Board of Trustees, President Beebe. I am privileged to present Jose with a longevity award today. Jose Martinez and I have been working together for about three years, and I've gotten to know him and all of his accomplishments, and so I'm going to share with you some of those today. Jose created the Citizenship Center, now known as the Community Education Center, located in Room 22 at the Wake campus. It has assisted more than 35,000 families in becoming U.S. permanent residents and approximately 40,000 people in becoming U.S. citizens. This program is recognized as an exemplary program by the California Chancellor's Office and provides immigration and citizenship services for a small fee. He's also responsible for several bilingual education initiatives. He created the curriculum and offered the first bilingual computer classes in non-credit. He created the first bilingual citizenship class. And he proposed to have the bilingual GED classes and testing and assisted with the development and promotion of both. First, he created the first bilingual auto mechanics class, a bilingual sewing class, and bilingual computer labs. And also, we continue a youth summer program that serves 80 to 100 youth each summer in the Construction Technology Academy. And we receive stipends from the private sector and from the Mexican government. Jose is also responsible for bilingual outreach and promotion in our community. For 15 years, he served as the liaison between SBCC and the Mexican government in educational initiatives. One is Plaza Comunitaria. The adults can obtain their elementary and secondary education certificates from Mexico as they progress through their GED certificate. IME Basas, I think I'm pronouncing that right, where the CEC has received dollars and scholarships for ESL and GED students. And on May 5, 2017, we will be experiencing the grand opening of the Window of Educational Opportunities at the consulate of Mexico in Oxnard, and Santa Barbara City College is a partner because of Jose. This program plans to bring thousands of students to our campus. And Jose has served as a liaison between SBCC and the Department of Homeland Security and matters relating to immigration and citizenship issues. And he actively promotes education in SBCC through Spanish radio. He's done a lot for this campus in the last 20 years, and I'm very proud to bring Jose down here to receive his longevity.
Trustees, Mr. President, Dr. Beebe, I want to thank mainly most of my staff. If it wasn't for them, we couldn't have accomplished what Melissa just said. So it's not just me. I also want to thank Melissa. The last past three years, he's been a top supervisor. And I want to thank City College for having me for 20 years. I hope to be here another 20 years. Thank you.
He's a lab technician. And we have Dean Marilyn Spaventa here to give some honoring words to him.
Thank you, members of the board and President Beebe. I'm here to present Brett Dix for 15 years of service. Brett's laboratory technician in our Biological Sciences. He serves our most technically intensive courses of cell biology, molecular medical biology, and anatomy and physiology. Because of his expertise and knowledge, he also teaches part-time for us. His knowledge, organization, preparation, and creation of laboratory exercises, as well as his skills in troubleshooting, experimental protocols, and repair of equipment, has made him an invaluable asset to the Biological Sciences Department. His colleagues say Brett is an incredibly intelligent colleague. He cares deeply that our experiments work properly so that students can have the optimal learning experience. He's also very enjoyable to interact with and brings depth to our department with his knowledge of the arts in addition to science. Brett is by far one of the hardest-working people I've ever known. He's great to work with. Our students love him. And if that wasn't enough, he is a talented and accomplished photographer known as the Ansel Adams of Australia, I learned yesterday from one of your colleagues. So congratulations, Brett.
Thank you. I'm not sure if anybody knows this, but I interviewed for this job the day I got off the plane from Australia. And it was never meant to be a permanent thing, so here we are 15 years later, and I've got a career, a house, a wife, a family, and the college has been a big part of that. So thank you for all the support over the years.
So now we move to 3.2, which is our 2017 Outstanding Classified Employee and the Honorable Mentions for the classified employee. And Anthony, you want to do an introduction?
Yes. So each year, the board pays special honor to a member of the regular classified staff that's chosen by his or her peers and for outstanding service. And we've got Liz Oshenklas that's going to come down and say a few things about this. Aren't you, Liz? Okay, you want to say something about it first?
It's my honor to be able to make these presentations. How the person's chosen, we have nominations by anyone, and then the nominations are reviewed for criteria by HR. So the nominations that meet the criteria are forwarded to the committee, which is made up of members of the Classified Consultation Group and CSEA. And the winner has to have the majority of the votes. And we had 14 nominations this time, and they were all good, so we weeded it down. So we have the Employee of the Year and four honorable mentions. So if you're ready, I'll start on them. I start with the honorable mentions and kind of work my way. Okay. The first honorable mention works as a Program System Support Specialist for the Center for Lifelong Learning, CLL. She is an expert source of knowledge in anything and everything related to what was formerly known as continuing education and is now CLL. She has patiently taught countless students, faculty, and staff how to navigate all of the complicated systems that have been used at the SHOT and Wake campuses. She has incredible patience and an eternally optimistic attitude despite all the changes that have happened with the college. Whether she is assisting a student trying to register for a CLL class, or training a faculty member for the 18th time how to find their rosters online, or training the staff how to operate all the systems, she is always poised, patient, and kind-hearted to whomever she is with. She has volunteered for many years for the 4-H organization. She assists with nursing injured animals back. Please recognize Rhett Shapin as an honorable mention.
The next honorable mention works in the Admissions and Records Department as a technician. She has provided 26 years of outstanding service to SBCC. Her primary responsibility is related to assisting the Dual Enrollment Department and students with enrollment-oriented and process applications and approval forms in a timely manner. She's very accurate in her work and is able to catch minor oversights and make corrections on the fly. She is a reason that over 2,000 local high school students each semester are registered in their SBCC class. She also processes every international student application. She's extremely hardworking and goes above and beyond to help her students. When working with students, she is patient, respectful, and genuinely cares in helping each student she assists. She has the ability to fully understand our students. When assisting students in person, she projects a welcoming and professional attitude. Additionally, she is a great coworker who gets along well with each individual in the office and is always willing to offer a helping hand to anyone on the A&R team. Please recognize Blanca Waller as an honorable mention.
She has also worked for EOPS and financial aid. She is a treasure trove of information and expertise for SBCC students and prospective students. With more than 10 years' experience at SBCC, she is the go-to person for outreach presentations. Her colleagues know that if she is presenting, she will be able to answer questions about financial aid, steps to enrollment, and many special programs throughout the college. She goes the extra mile for students, even using her personal time to meet with students she helped years ago who want to return to school. Through dual enrollment, she is influencing a whole new generation of students, who true gift to our college community is her genuine love for our students and for the just Santa Barbara our students will create. She sees a potential in everyone and has helped uncover many diamonds in the rough. Her work will continue to benefit our city and our world for generations to come. Recognize Christina Lomelli as an honorable mention. In this role, she is responsible for providing electronic card access to all faculty and staff, including issuing the ID cards and monitoring and troubleshooting the Blackboard Door Access software. She also issues all campus hard keys and maintains the tracking hard key software. She is responsible for lost and found, online DMV data lookup and citation appeals data entry, and processes staff and faculty parking permits. She assists with the Emergency Operations Center and with the Student of Concern reports. She's an essential part of the Security Department. She is a pleasure to work with. She is professional, friendly, and dedicated to the job and the staff. Everyone who knows her knows that she always has a smile on her face and is always positive, even when faced with the most difficult challenges. Please recognize Lorraine Valenzuela as an honorable mention. Assistant, LTA, for the Automotive Department. He graduated from the Automotive Program in 1992 and has been the LTA since September 1997. He is one of those low-key people that fly under the radar and perform their duties so efficiently and without drama that oftentimes their contributions are taken for granted and go unnoticed. Not only is he extremely knowledgeable about the automotive industry and repair, but he is always available and willing to help students and others with advice and solutions to automotive needs and challenges. As an example, one staff member had taken her very old 1989 station wagon to multiple mechanics to repair a problem with the ignition. None of them could fix the problem, and she was ready to give up on the car. Someone recommended to her that she take the vehicle to our Automotive LTA because if anybody can fix it, he can. To her amazement, he and the SBCC students poked, prodded, tested, and analyzed and solved the problem. It was a fuel pump-related issue that was so unique, the department chair took pictures and documented the case for future auto technology classes. It is evident that he cares a great deal about his students and often spends extra time to ensure that they not only are able to resolve their particular mechanical challenges, but they walk away from a project with an understanding that they can tackle future opportunities with confidence. He regularly participates in promoting the auto program on and off campus. He attends training classes on a regular basis in order to stay current with the changes in the automotive industry. He volunteers on geology field trips and makes any needed repairs on their vehicles while out of town. On these trips, he assists in setting up field camps and helping them run smoothly so that the students can concentrate on their studies. And he's extremely valued and appreciated by their Sciences Department and their students. In addition, his contact with students on these science trips exposes them to the wonders and benefits of having an understanding of mechanics and problem-solving. He's bilingual and helps draw ESL students into the program and helps by being an additional resource for them. In short, he's the kind of guy who won't put together a fluffy resume to show all of his accomplishments. He's the kind of guy that you would want to have right next to you when things get tough, because he is that stand-up guy who will make sure the job gets done. And that concludes this part of my presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. Congratulations to each of you, and thank you so much for your work for SBCC, the recognition of your peers, and testament to what you do for this college. Our next item is a resolution, number 25, for Classified School Employee Week, which will be May 21st to 27th. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution? Craig? Second?
Second.
Veronica? Angie?
Trustee Kugler?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Trustee Gallardo?
Aye.
Trustee Hasland?
Aye.
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Abboud?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Student trustee Gribble?
Aye.
And to continue on a roll here, we have the presentation of the honorarium and certificate to Pam Gunther, who is our faculty lecturer for 2016-17. And those of us who were able to attend her lecture, it was wonderful. We really enjoyed it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Beebe, President Croninger, board members. You know, as you all know, there's not much that makes us more proud in our careers than recognition from our peers. And I think that City College here has done a great job, both with recognizing the contributions classified staff make, but also classified contributions that our faculty make. And I was looking at this, I had the pleasure of attending the lecture, and, you know, for 38 years, the college faculty have recognized one of their own for contributions above and beyond, and the dedication that they have to our students and to the college. And I've only been here, you know, less than a year, but I look at this list of people, including Peter Hasland, among others, that, you know, these are names I hear on a daily basis of impact that they make to our college. Pam certainly is no different than that. We've had the opportunity to have many conversations together regarding education, just from the standpoint, not only enlightening me about what we do here, but just about having, you know, conversations about ways that we can make meaningful change for our students. And I really admire and applaud her dedication to doing that. The other thing that was really interesting to me about this lecture is that I'm a biologist, and this was biology. And I don't know how many times we hear from students about, you ask a question about why they didn't pursue a particular passion that they might have had at some point in their life, or why they might not have been successful in a particular course or something. And you hear them flat-out say, "Well, I can't do math," or "I can't do science," or "I can't write," or "I can't paint." You know, those are things that are, in my mind, unacceptable excuses. I understand why they have them. They've had them because somebody's told them that at some point. And when we're growing up and learning, and we're impressionable, and we believe those things when we're kids, that we can't do things. And, you know, there's one, I won't read the whole bio because it's quite lengthy, but there's one thing that I think really sticks out, and not only does it speak to what the research was, but why she got into this. I mean, her research was that, yes, we can do things because the brain is an amazing organ that has a capacity to rewire itself with proper training and repetition and math or art or anything, is no different than that. We just have to have the proper kind of training and guidance. And, you know, I'm thankful that we have faculty here that will do that. But, you know, the one thing that she mentioned was, you know, that she fell in love with the idea of, well, she loves math, but she fell in love with the idea of converting anxiety that students had into an ability and a belief that, you know, and a belief in that they have the ability to do these things. And I think that's what I want to thank you for, and encourage all of us to, that's what we're all here for, encourage all of us to continue to model that in the classroom, model that in our student services, model that in our interactions that we have with the students, because they can do it. We have dedicated faculty and staff that can help them get there. And so I wanted to thank Pam for that, recognize her, and have her come up.
Yay. I thought I was done talking.
Have to give your lecture again.
Yeah. So, thank you, board, and I want to thank the campus also. I have been here, and all the time that I've been here, I've actually felt very supported. Marilyn's been my dean almost the entire time I've been here, so I feel really lucky, and I don't know what I'm going to do when she's gone. But I tend to be somebody that gets an idea, and I really want to explore this idea. And most of the time, I've been supported in that process, and so it really fills me up and makes me really enjoy the job. And as I mentioned in my bio, I do commute, and this commute is getting worse and worse and worse. But I still can't imagine being anywhere else, doing anything else. So I'm really grateful to be at City College, and I'm incredibly humbled and honored to have gotten this. I'm also glad I don't have to talk again. Thank you.
That was really, as I said, an excellent lecture. Certainly learned a lot and took it home as well to encourage those friends and family who can also benefit. It's not just a school thing you were talking about. It's a mindset, as you said, and really, it was wonderful. Thank you. Moving to the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve? Peter?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Veronica? Any questions, comments, changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. Angie, do we have any public comment?
I don't have any slips.
Okay. That takes us to Academic Senate, and Dr. Priscilla Butler will give us her report.
Good evening, Dr. Beebe, President Croninger, members of the board. So yesterday, we had our last Senate meeting of the semester. We do have another one in July- We do have another one on July 12th. But we were talking about two important topics mainly. The first is, we came forward with some, with a document, which is about class size. And we had our first discussion, as this document is really to provide articulated, written agreement about what our rationables and guidelines are for establishing class sizes today. And we'll review that document again at our July 12th meeting. And I expect that we will be using that as a reference as courses come through CAC. The second discussion that we had was around the student evaluation process. So we've used paper evaluations for many, many years, and there's been an attempt in the last few years to move toward online evaluations. But one of the issues with that is that when we do online, there's a lower response rate. And so, of course, we want to know what every student thinks. So while we welcome those online tools, and we're hoping to have students do them on their cellphones, we'd like to make sure that students, that we are including every student in some way. So if we can figure out ways to increase the response rate on those student evaluations, I think the faculty might be interested in moving more toward the online system. So we'll continue talking about that and hopefully have some solutions for fall. Another thing that some of the academic senate leadership have been involved in is, in the fall and spring, the statewide academic senate has a plenary session, which is a great opportunity for us to understand what's happening at all of our colleges throughout the state, and to hear about legislative updates and other things that will impact our students and our institution. And so three of us, myself, our VP, Lori Vasquez, and our curriculum vice-chair, Kathy O'Connor, attended the conference on April 20th through 22nd in San Mateo. And we got a lot of great information, which we reported back to the senate yesterday. And there were two things that we saw at the conference that particularly resonated with us. The state academic senate, of course, has their own resolution writing process, and there were two resolutions in a very thick packet that stood out, because they connected so much with the kind of dialogue that we've been having since November about who we are and how we serve our students, and what we want them to know about us, what our intentions are. And so we brought those two resolutions back to our senate, and the faculty agreed that they do reflect what we have been talking about. And so we wanted to publicly voice support for these resolutions, with the understanding that while we are one college, we're also part of a system, and our system has certain shared values, and it's really critical that we, as faculty members, voice those values. And so these are not terribly long, but I would like to read the results of both resolutions. So the first one is support for marginalized students, and there are three resolves, but I'll be quick, okay? Resolved that we support the guiding principles set forth by Chancellor Eloy Ortiz Oakley in the December 6, 2016 press release. California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office provides guidance related to undocumented students that states that California Community Colleges are open to all students who meet the minimum requirements for admission, regardless of immigration status. Resolved that we support marginalized student populations, including but not limited to LGBTQIA students, students belonging to targeted religious groups, undocumented immigrant students, and Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival DACA students. And resolved that we engage in dialogue with other constituent groups in order to best show support for all students and to promote the senate goals of inclusiveness and equity by supporting equal opportunities and equal human dignity for all. The second resolution, and this has only one resolved, is specifically focused on DACA students. Resolved that we affirm its support for students with Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival status in the California Community College system, the other segments of education in California, and across the nation, and convey this affirmation to the Chancellor of the California Community Colleges, the Board of Governors, and other interested stakeholders, both in the state of California and nationally. And so with the senate's unanimous support for these two resolutions, it reinforces some of the work that we are continuing to do. Over the summer, we're going to have an ad hoc work group that's going to bring forward more ideas for teach-ins to take place in the fall, and we're tentatively planning three sessions, one in September, one October, one November, to address some of the larger political issues that we see as very critical for our students. So I should have more information about that closer to the fall semester, and a report on our July 12th meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Any questions? Anybody? Okay. Dylan?
Good afternoon, President Croninger, President Beebe, and members of the board. I am grateful to be here today to report on the associate students. This past month has been the busiest of the ASGs this year. And in addition to administering this week's officer elections and student referendum, which I'm sure you've heard of, we've had a rich array of events I'm very proud of, including an exciting Earth Day Festival on West Camp, and as well as a breaking bread event that brought together students from many different cultures and backgrounds. But I know you want to hear about the election, so I won't delay. So allow me to report on that. Dismal student turnout in the polls last year. I made it my goal to ensure that we engaged a large portion of our student body this year, not only to legitimize our student government, but to make sure that we're actually representative of the whole student body. And so to achieve this goal, we worked with the Channel Student Newspaper to organize our first-ever ASG candidates debate, which happened in this very room, and the candidates sat at this very table. The event's theme was "We, the Students," and nine candidates were asked tough questions, ranging from college-wide to local to statewide issues. Over 100 students attended, with another 150 watching from home live. And after such a successful event, we hope to have annual candidates debates in future years for future ASG elections. So we're very excited about that. In addition to the debate, we worked earnestly this month on Get Out the Vote efforts, including a town hall event, and ongoing publicity making students aware of the positions up for election and the issues at hand. After three weeks of campaigning, debating, and these Get Out the Vote efforts, the results are in. This year, our election had the most student engagement in the history of our college, with over 1,400 votes cast. This is 40% more than our previous record in 2015, and well over quadruple the number of votes cast last year, at 308 votes. I'm proud to say we succeeded in engaging more students than ever before, and declining college enrollment, so we're very excited about that. Next, I'd like to briefly touch on the student referendum that occurred this week, Associate Student Constitution, which was first drafted and set up in 1961. It's only been amended a handful of times, and so this is something that only happens maybe once per decade. Most notable about the changes were establishing a four-year term limit for ASG officers. Previously, it had been three consecutive years, so if you took a semester off, you could go again. So we changed it to four years total. We feel like that will allow a lot of fresh blood to come into our student government, fresh ideas. We incorporated all SBCC clubs and the inter-club council into the constitution. Previously, there was no mention of clubs, and we really wanted to make sure that our commitment to clubs was enshrined in our most important document, and so they'll be there now, hopefully, forever. And we also reduced the thresholds necessary for students to take direct action in ASG legislation. So previously, there was, for example, a 10%, the number of students required to sign a petition to propose legislation was 10% of the student body needed to sign a petition, and we reduced that to 1%. Again, in 1961, 10% of the student body was maybe 200 students, but today, it's a much larger number. So we feel like we've allowed a lot more direct action with these changes. And all of these changes were met with overwhelming support from the student body, all garnered over 75% in favor, and a 2/3 is required for amending the constitution. So as of 4:00 PM, our constitution was amended, and so we're excited about that. Additionally, in another referendum, the students have indicated that they support a potential increase of the student activities fee. I'm currently working with Dr. Beebe and Dr. Jarrell on the details. Next, I would like to announce next year's student trustee. David Panbetchi, won with 62% of the vote. David is a political science major who has served on the ASG for the past year as both a senator and the commissioner of events. He is a bright-eyed, intelligent, and driven young man with a passion for making our community a better one. I look forward to seeing what David will accomplish in the coming year. Finally, I want to thank our current student trustee for her service on this board and on our student government. Emily, you are an incredible young woman, brimming with potential and talent. I have had the absolute privilege of working with you this past year and a half, and I hope our friendship continues long into the future. The results for all other ASG positions will be announced tomorrow morning at our student senate meeting, including my successor. And this month, I will be wrapping up the ASG's business for the year and ensuring the successful transition to next year's officers, as they continue to work to be the voice of the students. I look forward to giving you an overview of our entire year, everything we've done at the board meeting next month on the 25th. But other than that, that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. So we have you for one more meeting?
Yes.
That's good. We would like to hear that summary, and that will be something to look forward to. Comments? Anyone?
No, I just, I was thinking out of curiosity, are the history of the ASP on campus, how many of them are local high school students? It's just a wonder, and I'm just wondering how many students sitting on ASG are local...
On the student government. Currently, we have one local student on the student government who is, who went to high school at San Marcos. So one out of 18 is a local student.
What's their position? They're just members?
His position is commissioner of philanthropy.
Okay. And I was thinking, I wonder, and only because we were at a Santa Barbara board meeting, and there was a student, and she, and somebody was saying, "Oh, my gosh, she's amazing, she's coming to City College next year," and a couple of the teachers are buzzing, and I thought, and I don't know, is it ever, you know, they come here for two years. Could you run your senior year to come to your local community college? Is that like something that any California community college has ever explored?
So I have a student who is enrolled in high school. We've just never, I don't think we've ever had that, because usually people want a semester to get situated in their new job.
Well, I just think, because we have such a robust dual-enrollment program in Alta Vista, so for us, and we're unique in that we do have a lot of students, I think that's something, I don't know, I just wondered how, and because we know that student engagement and connecting to your campus community definitely fosters more student success. So how to, I don't know, just throwing that out there, that that might be something we want to...
So as Dylan points out, there's nothing foreclosing a student, a dual-enrollment student, from doing that, but it's just usually typically spend a semester or something getting acclimated to the college and such, but it's possible.
I think it would be a really good idea to definitely reach out to students in coming years, to really encourage them to join our student government.
Yeah, I mean, it's just one of the themes from this student government has been inclusive, being inclusive, and you guys talk a lot about your populations of students, and so there are lots of student populations and demographics that I think it's just right up your alley.
Yes.
Just might as well keep going, including everybody.
Congratulations to David Panbetchi, and I will be reaching out to him to begin discussions and such.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Jonathan?
How much did the student fee vote win by?
That one by about 75%.
75 as well?
Yeah, so three out of four students, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations to David, and I was going to mention it later, but this is Emily's last meeting with us, and Emily, you have been a wonderful trustee. We've enjoyed working with you, and I feel like we should all say thank you for your time and your effort working with us. We may not be the most fun group that you would pick.
She's definitely made a positive contribution.
You know, I want to chime in on recognizing you, Emily. You know, you've been so compassionate and passionate about your role as student trustee on this board, and your leadership and advocacy has really been extraordinary in levels. But particularly for me, I think giving voice to the students that are powerless and underprivileged. You've always had a passion, student group that we have, and I just really want to say that you've given outstanding service to your students that you've been representing. So thank you so much for your service.
Just wanted to say, it honestly has been the most humbling experience that I have ventured into. I've never thought I would be one to sit on a board of trustees, but for the past year, I have learned so much, and I will be taking away a lot of knowledge on how to execute being a public servant in an elegant and graceful way. I think that's something I hope to pass on. But again, it's been more of a learning experience that I am forever grateful for. Santa Barbara City College has taught me countless lessons, and serving with everyone for the past year and a half most definitely will be one that I will hold on to in my future endeavors. So I thank you all, and you will not, you will be seeing me again. I'm not going far, so thank you.
Peter?
We haven't always had a student trustee. The whole idea of student trustees was debated in, as I recall, the early to mid-1970s, and I was part of the debate. And some of my colleagues could not understand why we should allow a student to be a participant in the discussion. I gave thought to that idea, but ultimately, I came down on the side that this was really a good idea, but I had no real clarity as to why. Emily, your performance here supports the idea and gives me this sort of reflective thought that I was right.
Nothing like being confirmed and being right, huh? Are you, Jonathan?
Yeah, Emily, I think you've been exemplary student leader. I've met so many people over seven years in student activist spaces, and a position like student trustee is harder than most other student leadership positions, because you have to straddle both worlds. So I think you've been able to really do that effectively and make a lot of good things happen for the students and speak up for them, so thank you.
Okay. Now we welcome Liz back.
Good afternoon again, and congratulations, Emily, on your service to the college and on, I guess you're graduating? Congratulations on that, too. I just wanted to make a few comments on one of the agenda items, 8.1. There's a lot of items on it that reflects a lot of work from a lot of people. We did two reorganizations, we did five new job descriptions, we did a change in job description, we did, we eliminated nine job descriptions. That means a lot of work, and I wanted to thank the participants involved, my team, and Dr. Beebe was directly connected in some ways to that, and Pat English worked frantically. We're trying to get a lot of this completed while she's still with us, because she knows the history, and it's just easier to do these things when you have people that you've worked with for a while and can get them done, and for the managers involved, and all the staff, and all of my, members of my unit that actually approved what we had done. It was actually quite a lot of work, and I just wanted to acknowledge all the individuals that were involved in that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Beebe?
So this last Saturday, I had the privilege of attending the Santa Barbara Earth Day Festival at Park, and I didn't arrive at the festival in my car. I walked, and I walked with a whole group of students led by our astronomy and geology department that were marching for science. And I was so proud to see the turnout. I mean, it was really fantastic. It was well over 100 people that were in our group in the parade, and it was quite an event, and I'm really proud of that group. And I was really, I mean, it's my first experience with the Earth Day Festival there, and I was really impressed with the gallery.
there, and I was really impressed with the gallery, the gallery, gathering of the folks. I think there was somewhere near thirty thousand people, I think, that went through that park. So, it was really extraordinary, and it's the forty-seventh year that, that we've had that. And of course, Earth Day started right here in Santa Barbara after the nineteen sixty-nine oil spill from the, one of the platforms off, off Santa Barbara coast, and Gaylord Nelson, Senator Nelson was, was the, was the instigator of all of that and, and beginning of it. And I just think it's, it's really nice to be able to reflect on the leadership of something like that, that has turned into a worldwide event and celebration for, I just think it's something to be proud of. You want me to say more?
Yeah. You were on the main stage.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I had the honor of introducing Jeff Bridges, who introduced Paul Hawken, a longtime environmentalist, who was recognized as the Community Environmental Council's twenty seventeen environmental hero, which was really exciting, because he has been a lifelong environmentalist and contributed so much to kind of the movement and awareness of the environmental problems that we have in the U.S. And so, that was, that was exciting and special. Just a couple of other things I wanted to report out on. The Resource Allocation Committee has been extremely active here, and Lindsay's been leading the way in the charge on that, and she's, every time I mention BRAC to anybody, she get, her eyes flash, and she gets all excited about it. But we're really proud of the work that that committee is doing. I know Liz is on it and several other folks, but they're really going through the budget in a very granular level, looking at the efficiency, the transparency, whether or not we're budgeting properly for certain things, and that, that certain categories are, are aligned with the budget that, that they need and that they can use. If they don't use it, then the BRAC committee takes that, those funds and reallocates them to something. The whole process has been really, really impressive. Yes, my president's budget is being subjected to the scrutiny of this committee and the Hawkeyes of, of Lindsay, and she's already identified that there are things in my budget that are typically rolled over that don't necessarily even need to be in the budget or reflected in the budget, and so, I guess that's a long way of telling you, she's cutting my budget. But, you know, that's, that's totally okay, that's appropriate, and it's all about accountability and transparency, so I'm proud of the work that they, the BRAC committee is doing. So, I think that's probably the end of my report.
The IPI.
Oh, you want me to talk about the IPI? Okay. The IPI, as we call it, is the Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative, and I would like to congratulate Dr. Paul Jurel, our executive vice president, for leading our IPI. He's our head, head IPI, I guess. But it, it really is a good process. We have, we had a team come in here, I guess there was about ten folks that came in from different colleges around the state of California to share ideas about enrollment management, productivity effectiveness, and just really kind of explore ideas and, and thoughts about how, how we're doing, and we're doing well with, with some of these, these areas, but, you know, we can always do better. And that's what the, the IPI group was all about in terms of visiting our campus. I also have the privilege of being a lead IPI for the College of the Canyons, and so, I'm going to be, I have a team that I'm leading for that, and we've written up a report to report out to them on Tuesday, and so, I'm excited to go and meet with Chancellor Van Hook and their team that's related to, they're actually starting a, a non-credit adult education program there from basically scratch, and so, we're, we're proud to be able to help them out. So, that, that is the end of my report.
Okay. That was my list, too. We come to the report for board members, and I just wanted to remind folks that we're going to get job descriptions from each of you, so hopefully, we'll get those. So, let's go through the group in the order in which it's shown on the agenda, which is first legislative liaison. Jonathan?
I have a lot.
Oh, we'll put you last.
I have the job description and a legislative update. Should I do both? Or should I go over what I have in mind for the job description?
Well, the job description, I'd rather put it in front of people in writing, like next time, maybe? And then we...
It's done. That's good.
Okay, great.
But the legislative update, there's also a lot for that, too, though. But, so, the first thing is Assembly Bill ten thirty-eight. My opinion, this has the biggest long-term repercussions for the college. It would create a Blue Ribbon Commission on Post-Secondary Higher Education, nine members, and three by the governor, three by the senate, and three by the assembly. And essentially, what this commission would do is take a big-picture relook at how higher education in California would work and make recommendations to the legislation. So, that sounds like a big thing, but some things they're going to do is conduct a series of ten public hearings focused on the needs of African-Americans, Native Americans, Latinos, Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders, boys and men of color, undocumented immigrants, LGBTQ students, and other underserved students. It would establish the need to create a post-secondary education system that ensures universal access and universal participation from all high school graduates. It would identify current enrollment capacity and what's needed in the future. It would look into how we can meet the goal of one point one million new degrees by twenty-thirty in California. It would determine the number of additional campuses needed in the state. It would address issues of systemic inequity with respect to access in higher education. It would look at how we can eliminate tuition in higher education, and more. So, this is a big one. I think if it does pass, we would see a lot of changes happen, so I think this is something to keep an eye on. Another one is Senate Bill fifty-four, which is the California Sanctuary State Bill that would directly affect us. It would forbid us from releasing our information about immigration status of our students to federal agencies, essentially, and it's widely supported. The next thing, so in terms of the budget, the Assembly Budget Committee passed many bills. One of them, Assembly Bill nineteen, would create the California Community College Promise, and it waived fees for first-time, full-time students for one year. And then it also, this is also pretty cool, because CalGrant funding has been a big issue for community college students. It also included a bill that would increase the CalGrant B Full-Time Incentive Grant. It would also, let's see, Senate Budget Committee, their three priorities that were, you know, that our state system presented to them were something that we've talked about here, which is readjusting the Prop ninety-eight funding that we get, so that it's what the statutory level is supposed to be, which is ten point nine-three percent. It also, they advocated for using additional funding for a base allocation increase, and then they supported a hundred fifty million dollars for guided pathways. Another bill is Assembly Bill one six two-two. That's a, that would require every campus to have a dream student resource liaison, so it'd streamline access to all available financial aid and academic opportunities for those students. Now, the Assembly Higher Education Committee, so they, they also passed maybe like four bills that I think are relevant. One is Assembly Bill three four three, and that would extend eligibility for California residents for certain immigration visas and refugee statuses. Another bill is Assembly Bill five six eight, that would require us, the governing board, for an employee who's absent due to pregnancy, miscarriage, childbirth, or recovery. But the ACCA has an opposed position to this bill. The Assembly Bill seven oh five would require a community college district or college to maximize the probability that a student will enter and complete college-level coursework in math and English within one year, and the California Teachers Association is opposed to that bill. Assembly Bill ten would require that public schools send hygiene products to their students at low cost or no cost. Another bill is Assembly Bill twenty-one, and that would, that's called Access to Higher Education for Every Student, and that one would do four things. It would say, it would extend, consistent with federal law, refrain from releasing information of immigration students, similar to SB fifty-four. It requires faculty and staff to immediately notify the chancellor or president if they think federal authorities are, are on campus. They would require immediately notifying any and all students who may be subject to immigration enforcement order, and it requires all faculty and staff responding to or having contact with federal immigration authorities to verify the legality of the warrant prior to complying. And then, another thing is the Assembly Public Employees Retirement and Social Security Committee. They discuss a variety of bills in regards to CalPERS and CalSTERS, and one of them is Assembly Bill twenty, that would require CalPERS and CalSTERS to submit a report to their legislature and governor regarding their investments. That's, oh, and then Assembly Bill one five nine seven would forbid those investments from going to the state of Turkey, or by being investment, invested in vehicles owned or issued by the state of Turkey. So, those are all the bills.
What are the deadlines for them to move forward?
So, these are bills that went out of committee, so by June is when the assembly would be voting on them.
Okay. So, the end of June?
Don't know the exact date, but it'll be at some point in June. If we wanted to take stance as anything, we should do it in May.
Marcia. I'd like to recommend that we also monitor CCLC's position on these, because I know they, they have lobbying efforts, and I'd like to be able to, to know whether they're supporting a bill or not supporting a bill, so we're not getting to counter what the state is doing in terms of its movement towards some of these things.
I agree.
Okay. And then you have a draft job description. Let's put that on the agenda upcoming, and the public can see it, and we can discuss it.
Look at it, yeah.
K-12. Veronica?
Okay, so, I see Jeff here, so maybe he can chime in on some of the, at a later board meeting, in which case, we can, we'll hold on that. But, we have not, not done our job description, and I should, we like it to just be a short statement. And so, I met with Kate Parker, so president of the Santa Barbara Educ, uh, School District, and having attended principal's breakfast, and just really thinking of how is it that we're going to engage with our community on this work? And so, just listen to it, and then we'll put it in the agenda. Represent SBCC and pre-K-12 school districts within the college district, because the scope's not going to go beyond here for now. Working in tandem with schools and community stakeholders to support our college mission. That's it.
Okay. We'll put it on with Jonathan's. And you can compare word count.
Well, yeah, and it's just, I mean, we, ultimately, everything we do here is to fulfill and move forward our mission, so really, all of our work has to be within that umbrella. And for me, I mean, a lot of that went into this, because I work for them, I sit on here, and then I sit on all these other committees, and, but, so then they all just really do work together. The first thing, the principal's breakfast, so I attended the principal's breakfast two weeks ago, and the college host, quite nice, the foundation, actually, intimate circle of our administrators in town to just talk about college initiatives. The main thing that I wanted to highlight for the board was the high schools wish that SBCC acknowledge a conditionally ready as placement for English and math. So, basically, they would, the high schools would like Santa Barbara City College to use the same criteria that the CSUs use to place their students in college-level English and math. And so, the question is, and you don't have to answer the question, Priscilla or anybody, it's okay, I'm sure this will come up, why does SBCC require a higher standard than what is accepted by the UCs and CSUs? And I know that there is a bigger story behind that, and we've had many conversations in the last six years about college access and placement and, and, you know, remediation and all that good stuff. So, I think that this might be something that should definitely be on our board agenda with the joint school districts, to at least hear the college side of it. But I thought that that might be of interest to you guys, and if it's not, you can say so now, and we can scratch it, and it, you know, won't be. But I suspect it is. I mean, yeah, good. Yeah.
While you're on that topic, did you want to comment?
Well, you know, this is, these are things that we review on a continuous basis, and I, I know that Priscilla and Dr. Jurel and, and others at the college are working on, on this as we speak. I mean, it's, it's going on. I mean, so this, this is something that, that is, is not ignored, and, you know, so I, I just wanted you to be aware. New to us or anything, I mean, we're looking at the assessment process, placement process all the time. I think with the guided pathways that we've got is going to, going to help with some of that. But I just wanted you to know that, that we're, we're looking at it.
We appreciate that. I felt like you guys are, it's a loaded, many stakeholders. The Downtown Organization's fiftieth anniversary gala with some of our foundation members, and we are officially part of the Downtown Organization, because we own Anacapa, which will house soon our cosmetology department. So, that's exciting to just see our campus spread throughout the community. Speaking of cosmetology, I was at another event with the National Charity League, and this was just Johnson and I, and it's always great to open up the program at the event to say hair and makeup, Santa Barbara City College Cosmetology, and the girls looked lovely, and the hair looked amazing, so our cosmetology department did a great job as those girls were all walking down at the Fest Parker doing their thing, so thank you to cosmetology. I was also at another event at the Impact Hub, and again, just praises for Dr. Moreno, because they, you know, just with our Shinkfield Center and just the great connection that they've had with the college at the Impact Hub. They would love to see our students placed as interns there, so that was something that was brought up, and so, I have that card and that contact, because they feel like Santa Barbara's the hub for that, and they really would like to work further with our Shinkfield Center, but spoke very highly of Melissa Moreno and said, like, it's already there. Everybody just gets busy, so got to put a plug in for that. The next thing, you know, just even in talking with Kate, I think they were wondering, they're having declining enrollment, we're having declining enrollment, and so, they were just wondering if it was consistent, and, but I think Mr. Matzoka also did a report on his enrollment along, I think, like Dr. Jurel's. So, I feel like some of that information's already kind of online, it's just a matter of putting those two documents together and looking at how that compares, whereas, for us, our declining enrollment, was it like, because their families are moving, and then is that impacting us, or, so as this is happening, I think, just getting a high level of that. But I feel like everybody on both districts has done a lot of work, and it's just getting that information and anyway, looking at it. But if no one's interested in that, people can just get a report and do their due diligence and read it, and that's okay. The other was just the great highlights on the promise, but I think Jeff will give us an update on that probably later in terms of the numbers of students from fall to spring and all that good stuff. Can I tell them about the Realtors? Yeah, so, the SBCC Foundation is hosting an open house, so if you have a Realtor friend and you would like to send them this lovely invitation, I know you did. So, yeah, so I took out my phone and wrote down all my Realtor friends that I know, you know, support this college, and so, if you know anyone, you can send them a lovely note, and, and our foundation, obviously, can work with you, so you can always shoot over your contact list to our foundation, and they will be happy to take care of that for us. I feel like that's it for now, unless I remember something else, because these things happened like a long time ago, and then we meet the reports.
Mary Ann, is there anything you wanted to add?
Craig and I have been talking, and we have jumped ship, that is. We are redistricting in the sense that Craig is going to work on the industrial business part of his district and my district, and I am going to emphasize K post, postgraduate education for both groups, so that we're, we're doing it by what we know, and that should be fun. And what I wanted to tell you about was, as, and I admit this is personal interest, so I have a reason to tell you, but this college is extraordinary. I have a reason to tell you, but this college is extraordinary in the area of the arts. And I don't know if everyone realizes how unusual that is, particularly in community colleges. And I attended a concert recently, jazz concert. The soloist came from, was a graduate of SBCC, and is world-renowned now as one of the best saxophonists in the whole world. And he was stunning. So, the music program, which does classical music and jazz, is amazing, and I am at those concerts all the time. But also, as you know, I love art and painting, and the art program is amazing. And I thought I would just mention to you that the first show I was ever in was at SBCC. It is amazing, the kind and quality of work that's done in that area, too. And the third one I want to point out to you in the arts is the drama program. We always make sure that we come to the plays at SBCC, and have since the first week we came to Santa Barbara. And I would urge you to try that out if you haven't, because they, the drama program is amazing. Thank you.
Okay. And back to Veronica for SBCC Foundation Rep.
Oh, I kind of tried a little bit, but not so much, I guess. So, we had our orientation, and then Dylan, our ASG president, was there. So, that I think is, thank you to the foundation. Again, to Peter's point, why would he have a student there? And so, there's something that our student trustee, they work together, da-da-da, obviously Jeff's, like, great. And so, I hope you felt like it was worth your time. Yeah. I just, you know, this is only my second meeting with the folks at the foundation, but I just want to say, you know, how lucky we are, that there are groups of people that volunteer to give their time, and they really do live and breathe this mission. And to see their enthusiasm, to see their dedication, their innovation for different ideas, to, you know, everybody has their passion, and we have a little something for everybody. And you have a true cross-functional board. I mean, he's got everything, Jeff, there. I mean, he can't bring up something about one area without someone saying, I'm on it. And so, we're lucky. These are volunteer people that choose to give of their time. They're not all retired. I mean, these are people that believe in that mission, and their heartbeats for it. And so, I can't think of a greater service than that to our college. So, on behalf of this board, I know you guys would echo that, that that is huge, and thank you. And when I get off this board, I'll go join Premier Ear Board, because you've sold on, he's like, on it. As far as the events, you know, Jeff is amazing at getting our college out there. And really, I mean, a lot of the events that I've been to in the last couple of months, SBCC, SBCC, and it really is a joy to see our students out there. If you would like to attend any of these events, Jeff could always use, you know, another person, and just to really, it's a great opportunity to be out in the community, and just be a cheerleader for this great campus that we serve. So, thank you. And, I mean, I don't know if you, like I said, the promise data, you'll probably do that at a later point. So, he'll really get into the nitty-gritty of what that looks like. Thank you guys for embarking on such a big initiative like this, and I'm sure there's bumps in the road. And that's how great things get accomplished. Someone has a vision, and it gets executed. So, thank you for that. And it's still on our board goals, so everything, Dr. Beeby, anything that we can do on our end, obviously, you know that we are here.
Thank you for that. Yep.
Thanks. Okay, the mitigation ad hoc committee. Our next event is a meeting on May 22nd with County Supervisor Janet Hartman. And I think we'll have another meeting of our group, and then report, plan to report back to the whole board. So, that's pretty short. And now, Peter.
Well, I think at, at the last meeting where I reported on, as, as sort of the coordinator of the ad hoc committee, I learned that by so doing, we had transformed ourselves into a committee. And there's a lesson in there somewhere, I'm not sure what it is. But it is, we, we met about a week ago, the three of us, Craig, Jonathan, myself, and we began to speculate about what it meant to create, or, or identify areas that might be usefully pursued college and community partnership. And the, what, what we came to realize is that we're not going to be, first of all, it's not, we need to participate in this. And we, we can't do that unless we are in the community, and essentially telling the story of Santa Barbara City College. So, we identified a number of things that either have been done already, or that we wanted to memorialize, so that they would, it would sit on a piece of paper and help guide us into areas where, where we feel familiar, where we can make a statement about Santa Barbara City College and its future. So, we, we're going to be, we'll, we'll meet again. But we, we have, we have come up with some examples of the sorts of meetings that, that have already taken place with Anthony or by ourselves. But the major, the major thrust is, we, we don't want, as a committee, to be the source of additional, creating additional work for staff. That has been a past concern of, of staff, and I think rightly so. So, we, we're mindful of that. We, we acknowledge that potential, and hopefully, that will prevent that from happening. It is a genuine partnership, board and staff, so that we can be honest with each other, and, and identify areas that are potentially really quite exciting. I think I'll stop there and come back to you later.
Marty, did you want to report on the Mesa meeting?
It seemed so long ago, but yes. It wasn't that long ago. We had a, a good turnout, and they do these meetings on the Mesa about every month, and then they fit up something. And Anthony did a great job in, in explaining things that were going on in the college, and, and I kind of helped to chime in once in a while. But if you remember from a couple years ago, we had that task force on the Mesa, and there were a lot of problems that we addressed and worked on. And so, I kind of was a little bit concerned, because I thought maybe we're going to have some more complaints and all that. But, but the miracle worker over there, it didn't happen. These people were just, the people were very glad to hear what was going on here, and they accepted, they, they liked, you know, they asked questions, but they were very good. So, that was, the, the questions were good, but the answers were even better. So, I thought it was, I thought it was turned out very well. And so, those of you who haven't had your town hall meetings in your, in your own place, you know, in your own, you know, the district you represent, I'm laughing, because I'm thinking about what's going on at the national level when they do their town hall meetings. It's nothing like that. And people just want to know what's going on. It works out very well. So, thank you.
I just want to say that Madam Mayor is being very humble, because Trustee Bloom did really a phenomenal job in terms of, you know, setting it up and being able to talk with, with these folks.
And nobody else was there, so you and I can just say how.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Well, they would agree. I think they would agree.
We were amazing.
Okay. Well, thank you. One, oh, Jonathan?
I, I forgot to mention this during legislative liaison, but Anthony and I, and Lou's, and representatives from Allen Hancock College, met with representatives from Hannibal Jackson's office, maybe a week ago, week and a half ago, about the Prop 98 split, and, you know, bringing that money back to community colleges. And it was a very productive meeting, I think. They really heard us, and they seemed very supportive of helping us out here. So, we don't know how it's going yet, or what's going to happen, but we got our word in, and we did what we needed to do.
Would you expect that to require, to show up in the May revise, or somewhere else?
Yeah, that's, that was the, the impetus of the, of the meeting, is that we hope that it does show up in the May revise.
Okay. One thing I wanted to mention to the board as well, I handed out a list of the events. We are at that time of year when there are many very wonderful celebrations, including, of course. And I'm hoping that as many of you as possible can attend these different events. Some, there's at least one foundation event there, and as well, a number of college celebrations. So... We now get to development of the consent agenda, and this would cover items 8.1 through 10.2, human resources, ed programs, which includes courses and stipends, and business services, the warrants, and the purchase orders. So, the question is, does anyone want to pull anything from that group, 8.1 through 10.2, from, or do we want to take it together at once? Okay. May I have a motion to approve items 8.1 through 10.2? Jonathan, second?
Second.
Marty, second. I assume no further comments, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And now, we leapfrog to 10.3, I think it is? No, 11.1, excuse me. The Equal Opportunity Employ, Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. Got that whole thing in there, Pat. This time, it's second reading and action. So, may I have a motion to approve the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan? Motion? Second? Craig? Any comments, questions? I know we all were pleased last time. Craig?
Maybe it'd be good to, I'd like to hear again, maybe in a little more detail about how the, the revision was lengthy. I have no problem with it. I think it's good. Therefore, I seconded it. But I, I, I think it would be good to hear a little bit about the process, why it got, how it came up for review, and, and how many people looked at this, and what the process was.
Do you want?
I think I'm going to call on Pat to, Vice President English, to come up and talk a little bit about that.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's, it's okay. It was.
A little more information.
Proud of.
Tonight you are.
Good one.
Very good, Pat.
Thank you so much.
She's on it, see?
I'm on it. Good evening, and thank you for being interested in this labor of love that I've been involved with for a very long time. The process originated at the chancellor's office. So, we were provided with a template. All of the community colleges had a model plan to work with. When we were notified that we would be receiving a template, I thought, this will be, this will be easy, because I think of a template as kind of a fill-in-the-blank, you know, where there's a blank, you put in Santa Barbara City College. That's not how it works. It really was laborious in gathering our data, and crafting it so that it really represented our community, and, and what kinds of initiatives would be a reality here. What could we do? What could we consider doing? There is a, an, a district EEO advisory committee that did review the plan. That's the obligation of the district before we are allowed to send it forward to the chancellor's office with our signatures on it. They are obligated only to meet once a year. Our hope is that our committee will meet more often than that. The activities that we discuss in the plan will happen far more frequently than that. But the committee itself really, really doesn't have a need to meet real regularly. But the composition of the committee is the same as all of the other district-approved committees. So, there is faculty representation, there's staff representation, there's management representation, there's to be a student present also on the committee. And then there's an administrator that chairs the committee. That chair, chairpersonship will shift over to our director, director of, going forward. It, it won't be in HR VP's job description. But that person will be on the committee.
Thank you very much. I sort of, some of these things, you know, you see them. We see so many of these things. And, and I, I just wanted to, to get this out, and I was discussing this the other day with somebody, and not related to the campus, talking about the college. And I realized how much I didn't remember, or how much I didn't know. And I, I figured if I don't know it all, then hence, I should ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Oh, no. But I would say, I mean, it's a good question, because it says, the Board of Tarchis is ultimately responsible for the oversight of the college's plan. So, it is a good thing that you know. But then it goes on to say that you delegate implementation of the plan to Dr. Beeby. So, really, your put in here is really fancy, but it's Dr. Beeby who's going to implement the plan. But, yeah, I mean, I can see how, you know, these things, they seem really vague, because it says the board's ultimately responsible. But really, the plan happens, and you're responsible, but that's why you hire a president. So, you're good.
Correct. But then when we, when we elaborate on these types of things, it, and then we delegate it.
Right.
It tends to, in some ways, it's positive, because it defines what's expected, what we need to have done. But it also can be constraining, and give you less freedom. So, anytime we do something like this, those are the, those two trains of thought, I pursue both of those, and then look at it from, try to look at it from two different perspectives. I, I didn't disagree with the words, and that means that it, that it can be constrictive, and that we, but I, I don't think this is overly so.
No. And we appreciate you taking an interest in it, and being able to highlight it. Of course, I mean, it was a tremendous amount of work, so it's all good that way.
And if Pat was involved, it's fine.
Oh, we knew it had to be good.
Okay. All in favor of adopting this plan?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pat? Okay, thank you. Our part was easy. Okay, 12.1, Resolution 26, augmentation of revenue. Anthony, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, I do want to make a comment about this. If, in your attachments to your packets, there was a, a piece in here about the Regional Strong Workforce Initiative, and there's a number in there that, that is 4,200,000, that was an augmentation of our revenue. And I wanted to make sure that you all were clear, that that money that is in that particular line item is part of the allocation for the Regional Strong Workforce Initiative. And it's for all of the colleges that are in our region, Ventura College to Allen Hancock. I think there's College of the Canyons, Antelope Valley. So, it's a kind of an odd, odd collection of, of colleges that we don't typically think of. But we are the fiscal agent for that regional consortium. And so, that money is not ours to spend, although it would be nice if it were, but it's not. So, we are the, the stewards of those, those funds. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. We do get a proportionate amount from that, that, that allocation, but it ends up being about a million dollars, I think, somewhere near that, for our proportionate allocation. We also get about $100,000 a year for being the fiscal agent. And that, that amount is, has been baked into the, to the revenue resources that Lindsay has passed, passed on to you in, in previous presentations. So, I just want to make sure that you are, were clear on that.
Would you be open to an amendment to make sure that all 4 million were? Just a thought.
Probably get in trouble for that.
When you say that we receive $100,000 for being the fiscal agent, what is on the other side of that equation in terms of labor expended by us in pursuit of this?
Well, that's all of Lindsay's accounting work, and folks that she has keeping track of all of it. When things are expended from the different colleges, they, they send those expenditures to us. We have to account for it down to the penny. to us, we have to account for it down to the penny, and so it's all, it's all of the, the behind-the-scenes, kind of back office, accounting work that's taking place, and that's, that's what we're being reimbursed for. So.
I just want to be sure that it's, it's worth it. I mean, sometimes you, you're asked to do a job, and, and here's a sum of money to, to make sure that that job gets done, and you realize that you're still getting about a dollar twenty-five an hour, and, and that's, that would be my concern.
Yeah, these costs are passed through to the, to the consortium. One of the things that, is, it's kind of a compliment that we were chosen of the entire group to be the fiscal agent for this, and I agree to it. We've done this in the past, this isn't something brand new, but it is a nice compliment that people have the faith and trust in us and being good stewards of their funds to, to do that, so we look at it as, as a compliment.
And Lindsay's promised to do it at cost or less, right?
Don't get her started.
All right, don't get her started. So, we need a motion to approve resolution twenty-six, augmentation of revenue. Peter moves?
I so move.
Second? Craig? Angie?
Trustee Kugler?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Trustee Galardo?
Aye.
Trustee Hasland?
Aye.
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Abud?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Student trustee Gribble?
Aye.
Do you still use the list that Dean gave you?
No, I had to start my own.
Oh. I thought that was.
Okay. Twelve point two, resolution twenty-seven, budget transfer between major objects. Motion to approve that resolution? Mary Ann? Peter, second? Any questions, comments there? Angie?
Trustee Kugler?
Aye.
Trustee Nielsen?
Aye.
Trustee Galardo?
Aye.
Trustee Hasland?
Aye.
Trustee Croninger?
Aye.
Trustee Abud?
Aye.
Trustee Bloom?
Aye.
Student trustee Gribble?
Aye.
Next, thirteen point one, student trustee rights and responsibilities. This is an annual obligation that the board has to identify if it wants the student trustee to be able to do this list of items, and this is traditionally what we have our student trustee do, so the action is required to provide for next year's trustee, basically, to be able to do this. Motion to approve?
Yes.
And then you can talk. Second? Emily? Okay. Peter, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd like to, it's, it's implied, but I'd like to make it explicit to add a bullet point that says, essentially, that the student trustee is invited to attend and participate in all public meetings of the Board of Trustees.
So, we can add that as a separate bullet, or bullet point?
I think it should be the first one. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's almost, it almost doesn't require presence, but it, it makes it more clear that we are wanting the, the person appointed as a student trustee to actually be here and to be a participant.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that at all, I think it's very appropriate.
So, would we take that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
I'll, I'll talk to myself. I think so.
Okay. And any other comments, questions? Emily?
So, as, obviously, it's an advisory vote, I was just kind of wondering, how would the board feel? I know it's in discussion about getting it to be, I guess, an actual vote, right? And then allowing the student trustee to sit in on closed sessions. I remember you touched, Peter, on how the discussion went about having the student trustee sit on the board, I was just wondering, maybe what was the background history to why?
There was a discussion of, of having the student trustee have an actual vote, and that, that did not pass, that was not successful. On the other issue, having a student trustee be a part of, of a closed session, it seems to me could be problematical for the student, and I think I, I would be really reluctant to put a student into a, a situation where sometimes there's more heat than light, but, and, and dealing with personnel issues, which is typically what we deal with in closed session, or lawsuits. I, I think I'm, I'm much more interested in getting student input on all of the other issues that we deal with, and, and in terms of the actual vote, as you know, most of the votes that we take here at this board come out to be pretty close to unanimous. So, the, the, the power of the vote is mostly the power to influence, which is not negated in any sense, at least from this trustee's point of view. I, I listen very carefully to what the student trustee says, because they provide a truly valuable point of view and frame of reference.
Yeah, I, I just might clarify also that when you said it didn't pass, that typically says that a student trustee cannot vote.
Right.
In a, I mean, you can do an advisory vote, but not an official vote. Jonathan?
I, I don't see a problem with the student trustee being in closed session personally, since the UC student region and the CSU student trustee both get that privilege. In terms of the vote, like Marsha said, it's statutory that the student trustee can, cannot vote. I think what would need to happen for that to be a reality is to change the selection process of the student trustee, because right now, you have the students getting two votes on the board, like, they'd vote for their trustee, one of us, and then they'd vote for you. So, that gives certain people two votes on a board, that's, doesn't, you know, make sense with California law, but if we were to change how the student trustee were selected state, in state law, I think that could provide for, because the UC student region and the CSU trustee do vote, but it's because the governing boards themselves appoint that person to their board, they're not elected.
Right.
And I might add, the other issue that arises then is that there is, all of the community college boards have a deliberate uneven number of districts, and so you would have to redo the districting as well, which is no small matter.
Well, thank you.
So, that's the thing, I mean, so. Well, I, in absent further comments, shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This brings us to thirteen point two, revisions to board policy, twenty-three forty, and also should be taken together with the revisions to board policy on twenty-four-ten, on the process for revising board policies. If I thought about it, I would reverse those two, because the point of this particular agenda item, both of them, is just general discussion of the board, of these concepts, and so I think it's important to kind of, it's not intended that the exact language needs to be what we ultimately look at in a first reading or a second reading. The idea is to talk about the concept, and the concept for the policy process is that as, as the AP already provides, any person can propose a substantive change to a board policy or a new board policy, but then the process to get there is, first stop, a substantive discussion with our president, basically, who is our delegated person to run the college, to lead the college, so that there is a fleshed-out viewpoint on what does this proposal mean? How would the details perhaps impact the college? As well, because of the responsibilities of the board president, whoever that may be, should be included in that conversation. Then, go to the board, all of the board, for this kind of general discussion. Do we like the idea? Do we think it should move ahead or not? And that broad discussion. If the answer is yes from the board in a consensus way, we should move it ahead, then we would refer it to BPAP for their comments, to collect the, the participation viewpoint of the various constituencies. So, it goes to BPAP. Board gets it back with the BPAP comments, and perhaps the language has been, you know, adjusted or not adjusted, whatever, we would, we would see that, and that would be first reading, and we would have an opportunity for further comment, and then second reading as well, for adoption. And obviously, that, there could be iterations on that, depending on what the subject is and what the discussion is. The amendments to the agenda section are pretty much intended to reflect the same process, because I think it's important that the first stop always be with our president to discuss an agenda item that has not been basically initiated by our president, or rarely a board president. I can't think of a situation, since Anthony has been here, where it hasn't been basically Anthony's proposed agenda. I haven't changed that. We talk about the, but whatever is, so it, it is not, it, it's a team thing, and the changes here are designed to kind of reinforce that team process, where you start the thought process by talking with the president and with the board president, and then move toward an agenda item if there is an area of disagreement. In other words, if a couple of board members feel differently and want the whole board to discuss it, then you have vetted it through the president, the board president, you know what the issues are. At that point, because of the Brown Act, you're really going to have to stop. I mean, you cannot discuss it with more than three folks with our seven-member board, and it will come to the whole board if requested by those two board members. So, that's the concept of these changes, the process for the board policies, and corresponding, essentially, changes to the agenda process. Anthony?
Yes, so you all are very familiar with the board policy review process, where those initiate many times in BPAP or, or my office, and, and we're working on trying to revise things or, or make suggestions about how we can improve something in particular board policy, or, or update it if it's outdated, or whatever it might be, and then it would come this way. So, part of, of that, that would still be in place. What, what we're, and Marsha really hit the nail on the head in terms of this being more of a team process, when you as board members have a, a board policy that you want to initiate, so that I'm, I'm in the loop on that, you know, and I can, I can give you some feedback, or some elements of the, of the college that may or may not have been brought to, to the fore in terms of your thinking on it. And so, it's really a process so that I can get in the loop on it when it comes from you all as an, as an initiative.
Yeah, I think it would also apply to other folk, but the idea is to have that first discussion with you, you're in the loop, board president's in the loop, knows what it's about, and then it's going to the board for the board to decide, is, you know, do we support this idea? Do we think it needs more consideration, move forward, whatever? There's a, kind of a first look thing going on here before it goes to BPAP, as distinguished from what Anthony was talking about, which is, there is a routine element to reviewing and revising board policies, legal updates, fiddling with stuff, and, and I'm not talking about that, that sort of thing, I'm talking about the more substantive ideas. Jonathan?
I am in full support of this. I think, you know, it's, I've been saying this at many board meetings already, I just have one legal question, and we, we actually are experiencing this same issue at the Isle of Asta Community Services District, in terms of how do you put something on the agenda when you have the Brown Act? So, let's say I meet with the president and the board president, and we discuss it, and then, you know, as this says, if they're not, you know, open to putting on the agenda, then I can ask another board member, but what if I ask a board member and they say no? They're not interested? I mean, is there a recourse there? Is there, I don't know, could we ask Craig Price if, like, how this would work?
We can ask him, but I think you've, we've got that problem regardless, because it is a Brown Act issue.
Right.
You just can't go from board member to board member and solicit support for something outside of a public meeting. So, that's an interesting question, and yes, I'm, I'm assuming we could ask Craig what, if anything, might be considered about that.
We can get a legal opinion for you.
That I wouldn't be asking for maybe explicit support of my motion or my resolution, it would be, would you support putting it on the agenda, which is a little maybe diff, I don't know, I don't know if there's a distinction in the Brown Act between securing a vote and securing a cosponsorship.
And Craig could help us with that.
Yeah, it could be, in some ways, it could be viewed as almost one and the same, I mean, because you're shopping for an appeal from board members about a particular item. So, I'll get the legal opinion from Craig.
The team aspect of it, in my mind, was simply that whoever, whoever the two board members are, we're, we're talking about, who, who supported a, an idea, would have that preliminary discussion, both of them, with the superintendent president, and that's primarily the, the role of, or the, the goal being to, to understand fully the implications of whatever's being proposed, from that perspective. Craig?
Yes. I, I appreciate the further clarity and having a, a more clear way that the process would work for us, and, but I have served on other boards, and it has, by the way, our process to me was confusing, the first few years I was here, and then I'd bring something up and I didn't, I had to learn. So, but now, on other boards, an experience I've had, it's been much easier to, to at least bring up a topic, to be able to make comments on a certain topic, and to get it added to an agenda even at the last minute, just to, just to say, I have a topic I'd like to bring up, not to propose something that's written out or a policy change, but to have a discussion on a topic or a specific subject, just to bring the topic up to the board as a whole, and as opposed to, to you, Anthony, and I could, I could tap you on the shoulder in the hallway, and you'll pay attention to me, because that's the kind of president you are, and you will, and I could say, I'm interested in this, and this, and this, and you might give me some guidance, but alternatively, I think the board member should have the freedom to bring up a topic, and if we run out of time for it, that can be put on the next agenda, or that person could be called on, just to bring up a topic, not to present a whole idea on something, but to get, just to present concerns.
The history here includes situations where there has been less compatibility among different board members in their point of view about how things should be handled, and so there has been a history which led to the current version of the agenda policy, which, the same thing kept coming up, and up, and up, again, and again, and there's a certain point at which, you know, the board has considered it, and that's enough.
Yeah.
And it didn't seem to be working, so that led, I think, to the current version. The other aspect is that we do have a regular agenda item where all of you are basically asked, you know, is there a topic? And that's what normally winds up in the list at the end of to-be-scheduled, and granted, we don't get to some of those as fast as we might hope, but it's an attempt to keep track of what people are interested in as a topic in, in that way.
And I would, I would imagine that a board member, at that point, at that agenda item, saying, you know, I'm really interested in this issue, and I, I need another, I need a, an assistant, or I need a collaborator to bring this to the agenda.
That, that could happen, but again, I would suggest the concept being that you've, that it's already, the, the idea has been vetted with Anthony first, so there's not a surprise here in a meeting.
But this would only be for the purpose of getting it to the agenda position, and I, I, I think it's very important to have everybody feel as if they have a chance to, to agendize a particular issue, not to be overly restrictive about it, but it could be that I would say, look, guys, I, I have this agenda.
But it could be that I would say, look guys, I, I have this agenda item. Is anybody interested in? No? Oh, okay. And then I can, I've, I've had my day in court. It's been fully transparent. There's no violation of the Brown Act. We're done.
And, and that may be Craig's answer to Jonathan's question, that the way to bring it up would be that, to see. The tricky part there is has, has there been an opportunity for that other person to talk with the president? Superintendent president?
The conversation could still go on afterward.
It could, it could. I mean, we're not a fast-moving organization here, so for the most part.
Sometimes people would like us to be faster-moving on certain issues at times, but it takes study to make a proper decision. And I think you addressed my real question. I was trying to figure out how to really ask it and we've talked before, I have some, I have a couple of concerns and just kind of waiting for the right time and things are settling down and looking pretty good. And I'm pretty happy at the moment with the progress that we're making. We're, we are progressing. This board is very highly functioning, functional. Other boards I've sat on have not been so great at times, but we don't seem to have problems talking to each other, at least listening. So this top, this is a big topic. This particular policy is, to me, was very meaningful.
Anybody more comments?
I, first of all, I appreciate this. I, I like the idea of vetting it through Dr. Beebe, not because, and not to take away our due diligence here with our colleagues here to say, oh, items for future consideration. But because we are a policymaking body, I feel like this flips the whole thing in order and it sort of puts our house in order because the only thing we can do is set policy. We have our community, we can set policy and then Dr. Beebe can lay out the stuff. What I like about vetting it through, it's not so much that not to let it out here. And I can think of, for example, the promise. It's a new initiative, there's a lot going on with it, and there's a million things that I, you know, and so I just sit here and I say, okay, I trust that this, this. But there's things that I'm not in the weeds, right? I can see all this stuff and I'm so excited about everything that's going on, but I might get in the way because Dr. Jarrell is on, working on something, Dr. Beebe, Gretchen and Jeff and everybody's doing something. So there's real value in me fulfilling that mission if I go through Dr. Beebe and he can say, oh, X, Y, Z. And in different initiatives, same thing with the ECE, we've, you know, the, the, there's a lot with child development and there's a lot of different stakeholders. But I know that there's things in the SBCC house that are underway. So that is not me saying, come on, Mary Anne, like, let's push him. It's just saying, okay, there's, there's things that we will eventually be able to support. And I just, I think of my brother, he says, in the military, you support, you lead, or you stay out of the way. And so those three things I think are good for us as board members to remember. When do you need us to lead, Dr. Beebe? Okay. And when do you need us to stay out of the way? And I feel like this doesn't take away my policymaking role, it just kind of puts it in order. But I know that at the end of that agenda, I mean, goodness, I just told you guys, why does SBCC have the higher thing? Are you guys good with that? Let's, you hash that out when you meet the board. I think that that's another example of, there's a lot of things with our local high schools that I would love to see yesterday at this table, but we're not a very fast-moving organization because we're education and so, and all that said, I, I like it. I like that the policies were originate at the, at this table and then go out because really like Craig said, you're gonna be out there, they're gonna ask you. The nice thing about the originating here is this is where the public hopefully is viewing this is, and even though the other ones are Brown Act and we could look through them, I don't know how many people in the community go through this academic senate agenda or the CPC agenda, but they will click on our agenda and if it's, comes out here first, then they'll say, oh, they're gonna talk about that and then it'll go through and come back. So I don't know, that might have been too wordy for you guys, but that's, I like it.
I don't think it was too wordy at all. I thought it was, was well said. Emily has something.
Emily?
I really appreciate the fact that this has been kind of outlined. To be more specific, I found it hard going through and trying to figure out, you know, how does a student trustee place something on the agenda, right? It's, it's a learning experience being, this is my first board, but, you know, in the future, I'm, I'm really glad to see this structure lined up. I think it's going to be a great resource for members of the board who may not be as, I appreciate this and I really appreciate having to go through Dr. Beebe. I think lining that up will make sure that it is of serious consideration to bring to the board. Yeah, so, good approval.
Thanks. It did occur to me, what's not in here and I think may be needed is sort of a de minimis or a de minimis exception. There may be things that don't need to go that whole route. You're just adjusting a date or you're doing a mi, a really minor thing and we would perhaps become too slow-moving in that regard. So that's an idea I had after this draft.
As an example, we were talking at one point about adjusting the date for my evaluation. To now it's, I mean, we're talking about the end of, end of July.
July, yeah, rather than the end of June. And that had to do with schedules basically and not to mention the fact that everything happens at the end of the semester. I mean, it's like, really? Does that make sense? So the thought was this is a de minimis sort of change that does not affect the broad college. But it's, if everyone's happy about it, we'll probably bring that one up. If there's no further, this is just discussion. The next step would be for BPAP to grapple with these ideas and then we'll see it come back. In the meantime, I think we'll probably try to work with it if anything comes up, which it may not. So we'll see. Now, we have a series of things that I think we're looking forward to, though I'm not so sure about 14.3, but 14.1 and 14.2? It's not you, Lindsay. It's just not as much fun as hearing from Dean about his sabbatical and, and the report on the School of Extended Learning. What can I say?
Just give me a minute here to set up.
So I'll, I'll chatter here and give you a little bit of time there, Dr. Nivens.
That for me.
So Professor Nivens from the Computer Science Department is gonna present an overview of his sabbatical leave, which was entitled Development of a Transfer-Oriented Interactive Computer Graphics Curriculum. And, you know, it's been, you know, I've been here for 10 months and I just have to tell you that working with, with Professor Divens, Nivens on a couple of things have been really a lot of fun. Just, and just talking with, with Dean so many times has been a lot of fun and very knowledgeable individual. And so I'm, I was kind of excited to hear about, about this sabbatical and what you learned from this and what your outcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, members of the board, President Beebe. And just to kind of write back at you on that one, it's always been, it's been a huge pleasure working with you. I really enjoy speaking with you and just talking about just about anything, actually. Wide-ranging conversations, so I appreciate it very much. So yeah, this is a report of my sabbatical leave project and the first thing to talk about is the motivation of why I wanted to pursue this project. And the main thing was it's games. And games are an enormous industry right now. They have been growing considerably the last couple of years, but now they're really big. As a matter of fact, a triple A game is larger than a movie. So that's how big they are now. Also, games are ubiquitous. The average age of a gamer now is 37. So everybody's playing games. It is not, you know, confined to people in their mom's basement playing their PS4. It's everyone's playing games. I imagine anyone here with a cellphone, I bet you there's a game on there. Yeah. Yeah. So games are ubiquitous now and games unsurprisingly require programmers since they are essentially programs. They require lots of artists as well, but that's not my department. I did look at that a little bit and I'll give you the depressing news about that later. But games require lots of programmers and it's obviously very popular with students. And so how can we serve students who are interested in this career field and how can we help them get, realize that goal? So we had a game programming class a while ago. As a matter of fact, the biggest problem I had in that class was I would have students start the class and not finish because they were hired out of that class into industry immediately. We had a lot of students from UCSB taking that class and they would just, they would not persist. My persistence rates were terrible because they would get jobs halfway through. Once they learned the, the basics of it, they were just gone. So I was thinking, well, you know, that's really nice and I like having students get jobs. I like that a lot, but it makes for a very unsatisfying teaching experience. Also, the students don't learn all the material, they just learn enough to get a job and they're gone. So I thought, well, we gotta be able to do something about this. I need to go back and take a look at what constitutes a game curriculum and also in the intervening decade or so, games have really risen as a subject in its own right. And so there's lots of programs now that have game curriculums. And so how can we maybe construct a transfer curriculum to allow students who are interested in games, start their careers here and then move on to their four-year degrees and higher? So that was what the impetus was. So let's take a look at some of the stuff. My outcomes, just to give you the laundry list here, I was gonna look at interactive graphics programs throughout the western states primarily and then try to figure out what the commonality was. Once I figured that out, I'd then go ahead and construct a series of courses to fulfill those needs and then refresh a couple of classes that we had on the game development. Currently is mobile games. Obviously, games on the phone are enormous right now. They're the largest, they're the single largest moneymaker on a per-game basis right now. Triple A games still make the most money on a per-title basis, but as far as the category, most games on the mobile space are very, very large, particularly free-to-play games. Those are really, that's where most of the money's being made right now. It's free and interesting how that works, the psychology of it. And then also we had a class on the books, which I'll talk about later, which I wanted to refresh that and take a look at it. It's a Nintendo programming class and that has been very corporate, shall we say. Okay, so first thing I did is I took a look at the western states because that's where most of our students go. They, they transfer primarily within California, but also in our surrounding states. I also threw in a couple of extra programs that were very well-known nationally, like Full Sail is a program out of Florida, but they're, they advertise a lot in the game industry, they have a lot of student interest. And so I put them in this, the bucket here too, when I looked at them. And so you can see that most of the game programs I looked at were in California, but I also looked at other states as well. We have a large number of institutions offering computer science programs that have a game component in them. So the way I did it was I took a look at the individual programs. So for each school, I looked at their computer science program. I then broke down the elements of that program to see what courses they offered. Because the thing is, that needs to be teased out is, there's, as you can see here, this chart shows that we have, the total is the amount of computer science programs offered in a given state. The green is only computer science degrees, the blue is computer science degrees and a game component. It doesn't work like that. There's a lot of graphics courses already, but they are structured for computer science graphics. They're not games. And so I actually had to pull the course of study outlines and look through them all and evaluate them individually for each individual college. But it turns out about half of the schools in California offer a game component and then, as you can see, lesser as, as our other neighboring states. So this, the upshot here is if you wanna study games, you have to wanna transfer to school in California. The bad news is though, the games are added in such a way that it's a junior or senior level course or graduate work, which is, that was a real surprise to me. Games are not that sophisticated in that, I think they require junior, senior level work or graduate level work, but apparently institute, other institutions do not agree with my assessment. And so that was the biggest shock to me and that's one of the reasons I did this sabbatical leave project is I didn't know the answer. So I went and found out the answer. And it turns out that it's junior level or higher is when they integrate game curriculum. The alternative to that are game-only programs or game-focused programs. And you don't see a lot of those in traditional CS programs. You see those in almost like trade school approaches. And those are go right in, do games from the very beginning, do games to the very end and that's it. In both cases, there isn't very much room for SBCC to contribute to that process. That was the, kind of the bad news. Because what happens is if it's junior level or higher, that's not in our purview. So we can't really teach classes like that. And the game programs, I looked at those and even talked to some of those programs, they were not interested in transfer students. They wanted students from the very, very beginning. And so they were not interested in having a conversation about transfer. So I thought, well, we have to do something because students have a massive interest in games, you could imagine. And we want to stimulate that interest, keep them interested in computer science, but yet not impede their progress towards their goal. All I was gonna do is, I do have a course already on the books, but it's not the, it's not a game programming course per se, it's a game engine design and I'll talk about that in a minute. And so what I decided I was gonna do was I'll take that course and restructure it so that we can do actual game programming and then keep their interest up and then also allow them to continue making progress. So that was the idea, was to change to a, change my CS 190 course. Also, I wanted to have a class on game programming for mobile devices as well. But if you have too many classes, again, that slows students down. Unfortunately, technology has come running to the rescue. So what I did is to, I changed my class around. It was originally a game engine course, so he's focused on creating, like when you play a game, it's basically a very complex program which uses data and articulates a world using that data. And the, the program that does that's called the game engine. And my original class was a game engine course. It was extremely rigorous. I mean, we did lots of linear algebra, we did lots and lots of very low-level programming. It was quite a rigorous course. The students that survived the class actually could program games at the, at a professional level right out of the class. So it was, it was actually a bit much, honestly, for the poor students, but the ones that did it loved it and it was pretty amazing what they could do. But what it really wasn't about game programming per se. And nowadays what you do is if you're doing a game engine, there's two basic approaches. You use a game engine and you heavily modify it. That's what most people do with game engines nowadays. Or you write your own from the ground up, which is an incredibly expensive endeavor and takes a long time. So what I did is I actually took about 18 or so game engines and evaluated them. I looked at them all from a technical perspective and I picked these five there, four, so there's four engines. These are four major engines. And what I did is I did a deep dive on all those engines. I taught myself the programming languages they used. I learned how to use them. I developed some simple little games and some, some kind of prototype curriculum to kind of see if they would work for us. And the game engines are the default game engine, which was made by a company called King. You ever played Candy Crush? You ever heard of that game? Yeah, that's the company that made Candy Crush. And they actually have a game engine you can use. And so I had to teach myself the language they use to do it and also how they do it. So I had to evaluate that engine. This is Lumber Yard. You may have heard of Amazon. They have, yeah, they actually have a game portion of Amazon and they created an engine called the Lumber Yard, which integrates into Amazon services. And so that's a great way of creating games that are socially leveraged. So that's their kind of focus. There's the Unreal Engine. I'd rattle off some games they've used, but they're pretty nerdy, so I don't know if you would know them or not. But Unreal Engine is a major engine as well, but it has its, it has two languages they use. I'd teach myself both of those. Then there's Unity, which is also a very popular engine and it also has two languages, which again, I taught myself those two as well. So I did all that to, to evaluate those. They all had different strengths and weaknesses. Default is great for 2D games, but it's not good for teaching. Lumber Yard is great for integration into social media, but it's not a very good engine for students to learn from because it's very complex as this Unreal Engine. So Unity turned out to be, the reason I also picked it is the language it uses is called C sharp, which is related to Java, which is part of our core curriculum already. So that means they don't have to learn, it reduces cognitive load for the students. They don't have to learn a bunch of languages just to get going on this. They already have most of the background already, so they can get, head right into the game programming aspect. And so then what I did was using the Unity engine and, and also I'm pushing it through a curriculum committee right now. So, and what that does is it changes the classroom from being game engine focused to being game programming focused. And it also has an additional benefit, which allows us to generate games for mobile devices as well. So it's multi-platform, which is really great. So now we can learn one thing in the class and they can hit mobile devices like on your phone, or they can also do consoles or PCs. So they can learn all about game programming, all in one place without, you know, spending a lot of time doing that. As much fun as it is to teach, again, I'm very mindful of the fact that we wanna get our students moving on to their next goal without slowing them down too much. Okay, so that was the, actually that was the main part of the work I did. That was, that was the first two things, the analysis and also this was the main part of it. And then last was my CS 191, which is Nintendo DS programming. And I always loved this because the class was incredibly popular because we're programming the DS, which is a handheld device put out by Nintendo, extremely popular. It was a very popular class. It became illegal. The legal was I was using a homebrew toolkit to do the programming. So they were taking advantage of flaws inside the device itself to allow you to write code for it. And so I was using that and then Nintendo said, we're gonna start tools. And I'm like, well, I can't have the college be exposed, so I had to, I had to quit teaching the class. So I said, well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start from the beginning and I'm gonna contact Nintendo and I'm gonna say, please let us be a developer, an official Nintendo developer. And it has taken me three years to get their approval. I just got their approval about four months ago. And that's just the beginning. So now the SBCC is probably one of the few, if only, community that is a licensed Nintendo developer. The problem is I'm now trying to work with Nintendo. The problem is, I'm now trying to work with Nintendo, I'm still working on this, even though it's part of my sabbatical, I'm working on it, to get them to help us teach the course because it's under heavy NDA. And the nondisclosure agreement and I can't talk about their technology, so it makes it a challenge to teach. So I guess I could just like put a blanket over things and say, you know, see this lump here? This is part of, you know, that's not gonna be a very effective teaching technique. So I'm working with Nintendo to try to get them to kind of crack open the door a little bit and allow me to actually teach this stuff. And it's been, it's been an excruciating process because they're extremely corporate. On the other hand, it was super cool because when we got approved, I got a letter from Shigeru Miyamoto, who was the guy who created Mario. So that was kind of neat for, for a game nerd, so. Yeah, so that's what we did. That's what I did. So, yes, that was the last part of my sabbatical leave projects. That was still an ongoing project. Again, trying to do that dance with Nintendo is quite a challenge and that's the main thing I'm working on with that. So, and this is actually a game called Horizon Zero Dawn. It's a PS4 game. It's fantastic, absolutely fantastic. And that's a screenshot from the game itself. It's not an artist. So are there any questions?
This is so awesome.
I, I have to admit that I haven't understood a word you said. But, but I'm really glad that you said it.
Reading my student evaluations, I see.
Dean, I think this is awesome. And I, I mean, I'm hanging around like a wolf pack of teenage boys right now, like everywhere I go, because that's like my kids are just there. And I mean, every day after school, can they come over? And like, and they're in this room. And like, if I'm like, like if I can just take that and then say, you guys will do this at City College? Like, I mean, this is, and I was having dinner on Easter with, and I was talking to one of the chief architects for a major company right now. And I was like, so do you really think coding, like to do, like they need to learn to code? And he's like, yes. And I was like, like they need to learn to read? He's like, yes. And I was like, oh my gosh, what if like the next washer you buy? Or like your refrigerator, you're gonna be like, oh, we'll write the code. It'll come out with cubes or, you know, crush ice or whatever. And so, I mean, I'm a literacy teacher, so I, but I'm fascinated by this and I think it's so awesome. And congratulations for all the work and your approval process. And I just wanna applaud Dean at the Armory. Like, can we just do that? Like, just have a whole CTE academy like? That I think that this is, is the wave of the future and these kids are excited. And when you talked about the linear algebra, I thought, gosh, could, could these classes be a context where they learn the math in, in context? Because I know we've had conversations around physics. Well, why are you teaching that in math when you could teach it in physics? Because the context, wondering with this context, like is there mathematics that would be better to learn within? Or, I don't know, I just am thinking already.
In particular, linear algebra, I mean, taking a cube and rendering it on a 2D surface, that is a linear algebra. It's a transformation of matrices. And so a four-by-four matrix transformation. And so all a video game engine, all a video games do are take points and do four-by-four matrix transformations on them. That's literally all they do. That's why video game cards, the game cards you put in the computers, that's why they're so powerful, because that's all they're doing is those, that linear algebra. So you absolutely could do something like that.
Yeah, so for our students, I mean, worksheet, or like, let me do this in context and just the learning, I, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot that can be done with this. One thing to note though, is just since we're talking about this, is computer science skills, some of the new research has shown that CS skills don't necessarily have the same wide applicability as like reading or writing skills. Although I know it's really popular, and it sounds kind of odd to be saying this as a CS faculty, it doesn't really necessarily transfer as well as other skills like reading or writing. So we do have to be a little, it's not a no-brainer. Believe me, I lo, I would love to see, I mean, my personal vision is, every single student at SBCC take a programming class at some point. That would be, that's what I would love to see. But I also know that there's a lot of competing classes and the skills you learn aren't as necessarily transferable. However, it is known as what's called a tertiary skill, as far as scaffolding goes. So it is kind of an interesting thing to learn even on its own.
Well, yeah, you're very specialized. I mean, Dr. Haslam understood nothing you said.
I, if I can. I, I'm thrilled what you did. It was, it was a presentation on it. And then she took part of my, Veronica here took part of my thunder away because I, I'd spent time in classrooms teaching algebra. And I got a lot of flack because I was in a certain type of schools and like the court community schools, like why am I here? Why, I don't need to know that. You know, and, you know, if you give people like learning in context, if you could teach them algebra because without it, they can't develop this kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if you can, if you can introduce that, you don't have to teach the whole thing, but if you could get the, if, if even our high schools could get that across to the students, it gives them another reason to come here.
Right.
And it gives them a reason to pay attention in their algebra class.
Absolutely.
This is, this is probably one of the best motivators I could think of. And I wish five years ago, I would have thought about it. And I don't know why I didn't, except the last time I took computer science was like 1969. And the first language I learned was Fortran. And then I learned Cobol, no, RPG. And, yeah, and then I key punched all those little cards and the big cards and, you know, but it's not the same world anymore. But the thing is, we use that algebra and that stuff to, to just do very simple things. And, you know, you could get that concept across. And it's real hard to do that in front of a group of students unless you can demonstrate while you're doing it. And now that we have computers in the high schools, I'd just like to see this kind of expansion and leading the way. You're a perfect example of what I've come to expect from this college. And I think you've exceeded my expectations. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. One of the things I like to do is when I talk to students, I actually have done some work with Partners in Education and I'll talk to some of the students and I'll just ask them, what are you into? And no matter what they say, I can tie it to computer science because computer science touches everything nowadays. There's nothing we don't touch. And so, like, some kids like to drive cars and so I talk about active suspension and some kids like to, I mean, they talk about video games obviously, and so that's an easy one, but everything is touched by computer science. And a lot of stuff you can tie back to this kind of thing. And again, this class is focused on keeping students' interests, keeping them motivated, even though honestly, it doesn't really transfer as much as I would like it to. We're working on that still. That's a long-term project.
Jonathan?
Well, no, in fact, I've been playing games since I was two. Not, not as much time these days to do it, but I would have got all your references on the Unreal Engine. But I think this is amazing. So this is, this is very, very cool. I would love to see SBCC be a destination to learn how to do this. Like if we're that college that you want to take this CS 190 class, you get in and you do the, I mean, obviously take other classes, but that would be, that would be amazing if we were that school that people came to and were able to learn skills and get a job after in this field, which, as you said, is growing. Everyone should probably know this at some point in the future.
I think so.
Yeah.
That I would. Oh, sorry, Marcia.
No, I was just gonna say, if ever, if ever anyone had a good reason for non-persistence, you nailed it. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, you said that, that the schools that are specializing in this are not interested in our students as transfer. Is there an opportunity for our own CTE program in this area?
That's, there's some opportunity. I think the opportunity in that case would be coupled with an entrepreneurial bent. As far as getting a job in a company, they really like to have bachelor's, master's degrees a lot. I mean, they really like that a lot. But I think games, especially nowadays with mobile devices, you can get a small team together and do a game. It's not as easy as it used to be, but you still can do it. If you guys ever heard of Clash of Clans or those kinds of games, the team that did that was six people. And they were, yeah, they were making, I think they were making, when it first came out, I think they were making $10 million a day. I mean, the money you can make if you hit, it's rare, but if you hit a game, it, it's the million, the money is unreal. Yeah.
And you could solve our budget problem as well then.
I'm glad Jeff has left, otherwise he'd be all over me.
Marcia, have a quick question.
Sure.
Based on Marcia's comment, you know, would, do you think there would be opportunity for partnership with UCSB's Technology Management Program? Because you just said they want that A, people could learn something here and then, you know, go there.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a possibility. I mean, I'm kind of on two minds of this because one of the things is, I'm very concerned about students getting pigeonholed. And if they don't have a degree, a bachelor's degree at least in computer science, and they go into programming, what happens is, they have a tendency to start up real high and they stay there forever. It limits their long-term career prospects. So I'm very concerned about that. So I don't want to just push that too much. If a student really has a passion for it, then you're probably better off helping them realize their passion. But I think for most students, the bachelor's degree is by far the most efficacious way of realizing a multitude of goals rather than just one particular thing like games. Because they may get older and may not like games. Games are a tough industry. It's really difficult. It's very, very competitive. It is extreme, a lot of people want to do it. The pay is not great for programmers. You work in a bank, you can make almost twice the money. I mean, so it's, you know, it's, it's not all roses. I mean, it's, it's a wonderful thing to do. And if it's a passion, then it's a passion. But I think people have to be careful not to, you know, push students in that direction necessarily. So I'm a little mindful of that as well.
Well, thank you. Great report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Progress report on the School of Extended Learning.
So while Dr. Drell's approaching the, the lecture in here, I wanted to say that, you know, we've been in really fantastic discussions, deep discussions at the College Planning Council and, and other areas and venues across the college about the whole idea of bringing back the state-funded adult education programs and make for the community. And, you know, I think our discussion really early on at CPC, I think it was with my first month here, Priscilla remembers all these things. But I think it was my first month here, we started talking about, about this. And we had several presentations. I gave a presentation. We had lots of discussion about it. But in the end, the recommendation, because it's a recommending body, was that we moved forth in pursuing the, the adult education program, which was thrilling to me and I know thrilling to a lot of the people at the college and in the community. So I'm glad that Dr. Drell is here to give us an update on kind of where we are with all of it.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Beebe. Also, great job, Dean. That, that's, I'm humbled by the work we do here. That's spectacular. So I used to think I was smart and now I'm, whatever.
It's a big club.
Yeah, I know. At least, at least I'm not alone. Thank you, Peter. You know, I, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to update you a little bit on some, some work that several of us on campus here actually have been engaged in to try to increase our offerings to, to reach a group of students that, that, that we haven't currently been reaching. You know, I want to start by giving just a little bit of a background information, talk a little bit about where we are currently with our state and educational program on, in the short term and then a little bit, bit further in the long term. So if I can put in perspective the, the kinds of courses that the institution can offer, there's really two broad categories. One category of them are courses that the state will fund. And you've heard us talk a lot about apportionment and generating apportionment and things like that. And there are courses that the state will not fund. And we offer both of those categories. This, this is the category, these two, two subcategories here are the categories where we can gain apportionment for from the state. In essence, when, when we say a class is state-funded, we're saying that this is a type of curriculum that the state will support with taxpayers' dollars, right? And there's two broad categories within that, that the state recognizes that, that institutions, community colleges can offer courses in. They offer them in credit and non-credit. And credit programs are the ones that I think most people are familiar with in the standpoint that they serve for transfer, degree, certificates, and, and are most of the courses that we offer here on the main campus. The other category of courses that, that the state permits us to, to gain apportionment on are courses that are non-credit. And these are courses that don't have any units. They're not unit-bearing. They can contribute to certificates, but they're, they're more finite in, in the, their applicability from the standpoint of that. One of the things that's interesting is that, you know, if you look at the level of funding, highest level of fundings that we get are, are for the credit courses, although the state has recently recognized that there are many non-credit courses that should receive the same allocation. And those are what are called CDCP. You may have heard of that before, Career Development and College Prep. So these are courses that are linked together in a certificate that either gain a student entry into an occupation or into a credit program or another program on campus, right? One of the things that's interesting, the difference between the two, is that the state does not allow repeatability of courses that are credit-bearing. So if a person has successfully completed a course, that's a credit course, it's a one, once and done course. Whereas in non-credit, there is still currently the, the option for repeatability in those courses. And what you'll notice is the very last kind of bullet point there, and I think this is very important to note, is that for courses that the state funds, they have oversight over, meaning that we have to approve them through a local curriculum process. The Board of Trustees has to approve them, but then the State Chancellor's Office also has to approve them prior to us being able to offer them. So there's that step in there that's very important because they're funding them, they have that oversight for, to make sure that the classes meet the, the intent of, of the funding. The other thing that's interesting or of note with, between credit and non-credit, is that credit courses, students pay a tuition fee, a per-credit tuition fee of $46 per unit. Whereas in the non-credit, they, we, we can charge material fees and things like that, but there are really strict guidelines even, even for that. But there's no cost of, of the enrollment in the course per se. The other category of, of courses that we offer, we can offer, are courses that we don't gain any state funding for. We offer them as a fee-based program. So students, like the category on the left there, the not-for-credit or fee-based, students will pay a per-class fee to take it. And that fee, part of that fee goes to support the fee-based program and part of it goes to support the instructor. And then there's contract education. And contract education is where we would restrict the enrollment in a class that we offer. We would not gain apportionment on it from the state. And then a company usually would pay us to teach their employees this class or something like that. And so those are, those are kind of the, the broad categories. And you also notice that for the fee-based or the not-for-credit, these are the ones that, that you're familiar with us offering within the Center for Lifelong Learning. And they do require local approval for curriculum, but there's no Chancellor's Office oversight for that because they're not funding them. Okay? So if we look at non-credit, and in particular, what, what I want to talk about is, is our, our vision for, for, you know, where we might be able to go with non-credit. I, I want to be very clear about the kind state will allow us to offer and the kinds of courses we're currently offering. These are the ten categories that, that the state permits us to offer non-credit classes in. Some of them can be paid at a higher rate if they fit that, that career development, college prep category. But others are, are offered or are reimbursed, if you will, or funded by the state at a much lower rate. But you can see that there are immigrant education, basic skills education, both element, elementary and secondary. We can offer courses in health and safety. We can offer courses for adults with disabilities, parenting classes, home economics classes, courses for older adults, short-term vocational, and this would also include apprenticeship programs and, and pre-apprenticeship programs. And then workforce preparation. Courses that are designed to provide a skill set to individuals for the workforce. Maybe not the skill itself, but soft skills. Or you might be familiar with our, our CSI program, Career Skills Institute. That's, that falls into that particular category there. So, so if the curriculum fits within one of these ten categories, if we write a, a course and a description that is approved both locally with the board and at the Chancellor's Office, only then are we permitted to list it in our catalog and, and offer it for instruction. Okay? So it's a process. And I, and I really want to point out that it's not, as I don't know who mentioned before, about the speed with which we do things in education and in public education in particular, it is a very laborious process from inception probably of, of an idea for a course that we want to offer either for-credit or non-credit to the point where it can get in the catalog, could be a two-year process. State, it used to take about nine months to a year for the state to approve it once it got to them. And that's simply a workload issue. There are only a handful of people that work to serve 113 community colleges. So it's a, a very daunting task. They've gotten quite a bit better at that. But one of the areas where they really do have strict oversight is in non-credit. I mean, they're really careful about non-credit programming to make sure that we're not abusing the, their, their willingness to offer free classes. Okay, so it does take a long time. Okay? There are numerous benefits, obviously, to offering something in non-credit versus credit. Obviously, the, the most obvious one is that they're free to the student. That's certainly advantageous for them. They're repeatable. So a student can take a course over and over again until they have attained mastery in that course. Or for just simply enjoyment of the course, depending upon what the course might be, they have the ability to repeat the course many times. They're not subject to any kind of unit limitations. The, there's a, a financial aid limit on the number of units that a student can take that are, are developmental or basic skills. And they don't that are developmental or basic skills, and they don't count toward that limit. So there's a huge movement statewide to really kind of focus a lot of developmental basic skills education in the non-credit curriculum because it does afford them that ability to repeat classes and gain time on task, burning up any kind of units there. They can be scheduled just like a typical class can be scheduled, or they can be open entry, open exit, depending upon their constraints on their time as well, earning our credit for that, okay? And in particular, you know, these can be courses that we view of as bridges to educational and career pathways, and we can use them for career and technical education. And it's not uncommon to see linkages of non-credit programs. I know San Diego had a very good model of linking introductory into a career in the non-credit mastery in the career and advancement in the career and credit. So there are very opportunities, I think, we'll certainly be able to explore in that area also. So that's kind of just a little history about the classes and why we have to be careful about whether we put something credit or non-credit, when we can offer it, and what we choose to offer. The state of, the current state of non-credit, and I'll say the current state of those three other categories other than credit that we have right now, we have very little contract education. We have put a lot of our contract education program into the Career Skills Institute, and we serve industry needs a lot of times through that mechanism. As far as fee-based, we have, over the past several years, really developed lifelong learning. And we do still have a fairly robust non-credit offering, but they're in very limited areas. So of the 10 areas that were, it's permissible for us to be able to offer these classes, we only have them really in four areas. We have them in ESL, we have them in some basic skills with adult high school and GED. We have them, some short-term vocational and workforce preparation courses. And we, the parenting classes we have, per se, are a little bit different than some traditional parenting classes, but we offer the parent-child workshops at those locations in the community. And if you look at a yearly, how many sections of these things we offer per year? We offer about 900 sections, 900 to 1,000 sections per year of these non-credit classes. For reasons that we don't need to belabor, many of the courses over the years that we have built in our fee-based program, in the current fee-based, we have over 1,000 sections a year roughly that we offer in there in many different areas. You can see the categories there. The interesting thing to note, and, you know, like I said, I don't need to belabor the history, you're aware of that, is that many of these courses could be potentially offered for non-credit apportionment if they're written in the right way and approved by the Chancellor's Office. So that's the big caveat there. You can't simply just take a course that we've approved locally that's being offered for fee-based and just say, "Now I want to put it in non-credit." So we have to review the curriculum, we have to make sure that it is appropriate and the courses are written in a way that the Chancellor's Office will approve of before we can offer them in non-credit. Once we've got those things done at the local level, we submit them, they can evaluate them. So this is kind of the current state of affairs as far as the program. Very little, very little contract education, modestly robust non-credit in those areas, and then a very robust fee-based program in the Center for Lifelong Learning. You know, again, on par almost with the number of sections, at least, that we offer for non-credit. So that's kind of where we are right now. As Dr. Beebe mentioned, late in the fall semester, probably around November, we had some conversations about, well, what could we do with non-credit? We, both Dr. Beebe and I came from an area where there were other courses that were offered in non-credit, and the question became, "Well, why aren't we offering some of these courses in non-credit?" And starting to look at ways that we could potentially begin to do that, both to provide, I think, needed access to the community for courses that they don't currently have access to, and also to, from a realization that, like, we have seen a decline in our population from a student body perspective, so is this some area that we're not meeting some need out there and we could reach some students that we're not currently reaching? So when we get to that point, we saw that the conditions that led to where we were, austerity, you know, when the classes were pulled out of non-credit and we saw building up of the Center for Lifelong Learning, you know, from a history perspective, these were very lean times for the state. The state had mandatory, had very weak budgets for community colleges, mandatory understand, you know, a thought process that would lead to reducing the enrollments that were there. There was also a Senate bill at that time, it ultimately was passed, but not with the language that was in it there, that would have severely limited the types of courses that could be offered in non-credit. In fact, in particular, there was a proposed defunding of adult classes, parent education, health and safety, and home economics classes, which had been funded for decades by non-credit. They had, there was a, it looked like, for a long time, like it was going to make its way through the legislative process and that those classes would be defunded. In the final language, however, the classes, those categories remained. But one of the things that grew out of that language and that discussion was the, you've heard of us talk about AEBG or the Adult Education Block Grant, this idea that local communities should work as consortia to determine programming that's relevant for their communities and engage the community in developing programming around that. So that grew out of it and also contributed, I think, a little bit to the current state of affairs, okay? The way forward, I think, that we're going to try to look at here, we've recently gone through a small rebranding exercise, I guess, if you will, about how can we brand for a marketing and recruit it and not-for-credit programs? And we've established branding of the School of Extended Learning. And within the School of Extended Learning, our goal really is to meet the needs of the community by providing those courses in the most accessible manner. It might be non-credit, it might be not-for-credit, it might be contract education, it depends on the course and the audience of what manner we will do that. So we want to provide funding in all of the categories, or courses for funding in all of the categories that the state will permit. We want to offer classes as fee-based in the Center for Lifelong Learning or within the Center for Lifelong Learning model, for courses that we know we have a need for, but we can't offer as non-credit, and then to the extent that we can and have a need, contract education. I want to acknowledge the, a work group grew out of those initial conversations in the fall. Most of this work was done by Dean Evans, Andy Harper, Melissa Moreno. They were, it might seem like a small project, but boy, we've met weekly and they've spent hours and hours and hours. There were numerous other faculty involved. Kathy O'Connor's been very helpful for curriculum. So has Sally Sanger, Mike Medel, Ken Harrison, and Jan Brooks. We have some issues we have to address with how are we going to get these students enrolled in these classes? So we know that there's a lot of little hurdles that we're going to have to tackle along the way. The projects that this work group's been working on, as I mentioned before, this started with a non-credit curriculum inventory. We have spent a lot of time looking at what are courses that are in non-credit that we're not offering, that we could offer, that are still approved within those 10 categories by the Chancellor's Office. Do they still meet the, even if they haven't been offered in half a dozen years, do they meet the current expectations and standards of the Chancellor's Office? We're working on developing new curriculum for the older adult programs, adults with disabilities, home economics, more short-term vocational, and workforce preparations. We're also looking at infrastructure needs in order to build up and out this model. We have to address issues with admissions and records. We have banner now that we have to work within that wasn't there before with non-credit. We have a mandated application process coming online from the Chancellor's Office that they're going to force us to use for non-credit that requires us to deal with some things. We have human resources issues of hiring faculty, it's a different process to hire faculty. There is now, once we move out of the Center for Lifelong Learning and/or courses that are fee-based, we have the state sets minimum qualifications for instructors in non-credit, just like they do for credit. We have to make sure that we have the staffing to be able to offer those. We have to work out material fees and, again, work all our curriculum through the curriculum process. Having said that, we have some plans for the fall to be able to begin to start rolling out and offering some of these classes in the fall. Currently, we're searching for a dean that will be hired, that will be a dean of educational programs with the rest of the credit dean of educational programs. So this will all be under educational programs, so we have that broad collective oversight. They are currently, the committee is currently screening applications and will be interviewing for that within the month. We have an anticipated start date for that position as of July 1. We have identified numerous courses, and again, Andy and his team have been really critical in this. We want to establish a vitality program for the older adults, and these are older adults that are in assisted living or skilled nursing facilities. We have identified seven courses that are still approved by the Chancellor's Office that we can offer for this program. We have identified 15 different facilities from Goleta through Carpenteria, where we're going to offer these programs. It amounts to 45 different sections. And we felt this was really an area that was a service area that we felt really provided a good service to the community, and we wanted to focus on this one first. And we plan to roll that out in the fall. In addition, also under the older adult category, we have about 14 courses that we've identified that we can find instructors for. They're pretty easy to mount from an advertising point of view. We feel there's a strong demand for that for the older adult population in writing, literature, psychology, some music courses, both music appreciation and performance courses, and also some art courses and painting courses. And we have a plan to have, and so, offer it at Awaken Shock campuses that will fulfill those. And that's all in the fall. In addition, we currently have curriculum development in college prep and career development programs that, pre-apprenticeship, more basic skills, adult high school courses, pathways to credit. We are working on putting in a program that is a reentry program for the formerly incarcerated. We're really working to try to get some of these courses through. Those have all been in development in the local process, and we can't offer them. Again, this is all pending Chancellor's Office approval before we could offer those. We anticipate being able to offer some of those certainly by spring semester 2018, okay? In addition, we've identified several other courses, about a dozen, that are also personal enrichment classes, mainly in the arts and crafts areas, where we want to try to roll out toward the end of next year. And then you can see building through, again, all of these things pending Chancellor's Office approval means that we have to do the curriculum development. You will be seeing these courses at some point as part of your approval process, and we'll be submitting them to allow us to be able to offer them. And our goal is, two years from now, to really have determined what are the courses and programs that the community can support in those 10 areas and be offering them at the level that is needed to meet demand in two years. We do have challenges, but with challenges comes opportunities. We still want to make, but understand that one department doesn't always work, that the populations are different for non-credit and credit students, and the curriculum's different. So we want to be aware of that and have the proper people involved in decision-making that can recognize that. We do want to work on marketing and brand development for our School of Extended Learning, and that's an area where we'll be focusing a lot of effort as well. And just to mention that we plan to, as we roll this out, and to provide an opportunity for feedback from the community, since we're really hoping that this is an increase in programming that will really support the community, we plan to have several community update forums over the next year, and I would suggest an advisory group moving forward that really helps us in the long run as well, okay? So that's where we are right now, where we hope to be. Certainly happy to answer any questions that I'm capable of, if you have questions.
This sounds so good. I'm really excited to see where this goes. Could you give us some examples of some of the classes that might start being offered this fall?
Well, this fall, yeah. I mean, there are courses in both reading and interpretation of literature. There are writing courses for writing, developing personal essays, things like that in the fall. There's painting courses, watercolor, I believe, and oils, I'm not 100% sure, but I think that's right.
Some music classes, piano, recorder. Some self classes and some psychology classes.
Sounds cool. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, great.
What, Dr. Drell, thank you for this presentation. You're always very clear.
Oh, thank you.
Good teacher. What would fall under workforce preparation?
So most workforce, most of the workforce preparation curriculum is not the skill, the vocational skill, that would be more under the short-term vocational area, but rather the skills that are transferable, workplace skills that facilitate movement. So this is our, this is our Career Skills Institute, right? These are the transferable skills that really work with any particular profession. And interestingly enough, when you talk to employers, they're the skills that they care the most about. I mean, they teach, can teach a lot of the technical skills, but it's these workplace soft skills, I don't like that word, but that's what typically gets called, yeah. That's mostly those.
Well, I mean, thank you for all the work around this, and I know Dean.
Yeah, it's, they did most of it.
They're great. I mean, he went out to the east side and met with Casey Kilgore, who, you know, if you know Casey, she's practically running a nonprofit, even though it's an elementary school. And so I see a lot of this, a lot of what Casey envisioned for the parents in the community in there.
There really is so much opportunity. You know, it's really about identifying what the needs are and really making sure that we produce the programming in a way that's acceptable.
Yeah, and I mean, I think one of the things that hit, that workforce preparation is really career enhancement, and what is that one thing that's going to take that family to the next bracket?
That's correct.
And I think that that's huge for all our families, but especially here in Santa Barbara. The, you know, you're talking about approval for the courses. Because we already have the parent-child workshop model and we already have that course, is that, is there a way to, and the reason I ask is because this has been a conversation for some time now, but just last week, you know, we were at the Kinder Readiness Network, and John Bowers was there, and the talk from the preschool directors came of wanting to offer professional learning for the teachers in early childhood education. And so NAYC is zero to eight, and so obviously, I'm like, well, City College, ECE, I mean, ECE, nursing, that's kind of like, we own that. What, and so I just want to throw that out there, I know Dr. Beebe knows, and this is one of the things that, you know, we're not banging down Dr. Beebe's door because we know it's coming, but I think that this is going to be a dual benefit for the district. And so what the preschool directors have, we're talking about last week, and I know Yolanda Medina is on the network, and she also works for us, and she's part of the parent-child workshop, but some, a course within that, and so we already have it approved through the parent-child workshop, somehow, I don't know, I'll let you guys handle the details, but the need in the community is child development in terms of professional learning for that individual, that adult, to know how to best serve that child in all, whether it's social, emotional, and cognitive.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that certainly falls under, we have some early childhood education classes, which would, would that be in non-credit, for sure.
So that's just a huge need for the district, so as you guys hash that out, and I guess that falls under a K-12 day something, but this is really, it's a community need, I think. And then when I look at the courses for older adults, I mean, you have a lot of grandparents caring for kids, you have a lot of really busy moms, and this is really, gosh, I don't know, I think as teachers, we say, "Gosh, what are we going to see in 10 to 15 years?" But there is, there's a really busy community out there, of busy moms, busy parents, and kids that are in our school settings for longer and longer days. So like, I see like, a lot of these courses are going to be really practical, just good things for families in our community, so.
May I say something about that? You know, one of the things that we've thought a lot about is how do we pull in the parent-child workshop centers that we have now closer to the college? How can we support them better? How can we do a better job with the parents? How can we, you know, market that? How can we, we build that whole infrastructure? And I think this is going to be a grand opportunity to do exactly what you're talking about. I think there's also, I mean, that's a beginning platform. I think there's also things that we can do with Santa Barbara Unified School District, some collaborative efforts that I know, you know, you and I have talked about. So this is really, I think, the beginning point of a grand opportunity for that expansion of parent-child workshop and parent instruction. So we're excited about the opportunities with that.
Yeah, and it's conversations like these, I think, that are, especially for myself, who is new to the community, and I don't have a lot of strong connection with the community yet, that I welcome any input. I mean, feel free to refer people for me, to me for a I mean, feel free to refer people for me, to me for a conversation, because I think that's how this is going to start, by understanding and identifying what are the needs. I understand how the courses have to be put together to gain approval so that we can offer them, but I need to have that input from the community, and I hopefully will get that through some forums and things like that about what are the needs and what are some things, services we could provide.
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Craig?
You know, I, I'm really impressed by this. You've done your homework, and I've been waiting for this presentation for a few months, and...
Sorry, I'm slow.
No, I don't think you're slow at all. It's not a simple thing. I, actually, what reminded me again, and what I'd like to bring up, a few days or a week ago, there was a nice article in the news press about just a, kind of maybe a filler thing about demographics and about the really huge increase in the percentage of the population of children between 18 and 36 still living with their parents. And they divided it by men and women. And I don't know exactly what the local demographics are. Might be a little bit different. Santa Barbara is not really common to much, to many other cities. It's, we're pretty unique. But when you, when you do these class workshops, I think are just really critical to our community, and I think there's a lot of people out there in the community that don't realize how much they could benefit from it.
Oh, I agree.
And to get the word out there, and, you know, the marketing of these classes is so important. I love the idea of it, and I'm sure you're finding ways, and you have, we have people on staff that can help you do the research on the demographics locally and see what we're dealing with, and let's go full steam ahead. It's a, it's a big direction, it's a direction that we have to pursue. And there, over the past, and it wasn't one of the reasons I ran for the board, but I think a lot of the, some of the turmoil that this board had, like, say, six years ago, seven years ago, was about, you know, cutting, cutting this, and you addressed that very factually tonight. I appreciate it. There's still those people out there that are unhappy, and some of those classes that they didn't like that were discontinued, doesn't look like we can get back, but I don't know that for a fact. And I would like to be able to be knowledgeable enough so that I could walk around certain neighborhoods in my district and go door-to-door and talk to these people that were taking these classes. And I would go a long way, because if I talk, if I talk, for everyone I talk to, they're going to tell half dozen or 10 others, and then it's going to spread. So, I have to be knowledgeable so the wrong stuff doesn't get spread. And I want to be kept informed. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Well, and we just approved in the consent, very thought out. I mean, they're really, marketing, I thought of you when I read that agenda on Friday. I'm like, oh, Craig's going to be happy.
Yeah.
You've talked about really wanting to get an streamlined message. So, I think that, yeah, you approved it, so you're on your way.
We're getting results, and it hasn't even been a year.
Yeah, I think it's exciting. I'm very glad this is happening. You've explained how all this works very well. I'm going to hang on to this, this report, but I have a silly little thing that is confusing, and I think that, I think the people in the community will just naturally take care of this, but we used to call it Adult Ed when we wanted to sign it, you know, sign up for something. And then it went to Center for Lifelong Learning because we couldn't, we were told we couldn't do Adult Ed. I mean, that was just, we don't need to go back there, but just, but the change of the name. So, people say, when you say, oh, we're going to try to bring Adult Ed back, they're tickled when they, when they hear Center for Lifelong Learning. Some of them aren't even quite sure what that is. And now, we've got a third one, which is School for Extended Learning. So, I'm just, sometimes you put these labels on things and it doesn't matter because people don't really use them, but I'm confused as to why we have so many different things.
Yeah, the, it was intentful, I think, on a descriptor that was accurate as far as the kinds of things that would be in that, but didn't have necessarily a preconceived idea about what it was, because I think really the messaging really isn't, shouldn't be that adult education's coming back, because I don't know that what we will, the point where we'll end up, I don't know how it will look like compared to what there was before. But I, so, we really wanted to control the messaging a little bit, and I think that's why we're really having a concerted effort on the marketing and the messaging piece of it, is because we want to make sure that people, to the best we can, inform them about why we can offer the courses that we can offer and why we can't offer others, and if there really is a need to offer something that we can't offer in a non-credit setting, that we will try to offer it in another way.
No, that makes a lot of sense, but I think you're going to find people that say...
I think you're right.
Oh, well, you know, they brought it back, you know?
They brought it back.
But I agree, it's going to be in a different form and all that sort of thing, so, it's just fine. It's really good.
I wonder if it'll help, Marty, you know how it's like the School of Business, the School of Education, and so, since we are one college, like, I, when I saw this, I was like, oh, duh, because you have the School of Engineering or the College of Education, well, the universities, you know? So, then here at City College, you know, we have our business, and then we have our humanities, so this, like, at least I think when I've been talking about, I think of it as the umbrella that comes under that, how we have engineering or the sciences or the arts or whatever. I don't know if that, but I see what you're saying, because at least in the education world, we have colleges and then departments and stuff, but...
This will turn out just fine, and I think, I think we don't need to spend a lot of time on this part, but just to let you know that I think the community is, just can't wait to get this thing going. They're excited about it, so that's good.
Thank you, they are.
I think you're going to need to put on your roller skates.
You don't want to see that.
Because they're going to want to hear a lot.
Someday.
Okay, any other questions, folks?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Oh, Emily?
Sorry, I have a quick question. The jail transition program, all pending CO approval, can you remind me what that necessarily means?
So, the pending, pending CO approval means that, that we can't off, these are things that we are in development, in curriculum development around, topics around the jail transitions program is a conversation with the local jail, the county jail, about a reentry program, reentry courses that can serve the reentry population. Those courses would need to be developed, approved locally, and then approved at the chancellor's office before we could even offer them. But it's an area where there's a lot of discussion right now about curriculum, not, not just here locally, but at the state level as well.
I know there has been a recent, with the associate student government, we've been talking a lot about how our students, what was the word?
Recidivism?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back into...
Reentry.
Right, program, right. And I just would really like to emphasize the importance of that with our students, and I am really grateful to see that on this. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
And in the year that Peter chaired ed policies, I don't know if you can, it's all online, but we literally spent a year on this, and so, and I know we have a great transitions program, you know, at the REHPS office, but that, three years ago? Four years ago? The ed policies, the recidivism, was it four years ago, three years ago?
Yeah, I think it was...
Three years, three or four years?
Probably four, and we're still at it. And the, and this, my sense of the mood of the general public is moved much closer to where we were headed, or started heading just four years ago. And I think the largest part of the, the largest part of the effective message is, it makes economic sense not to spend more money on a program that doesn't work, as opposed to spending money on education, which seems to work. It's, it's coming down to that, I think, as a core argument.
And there was a good meeting with the sheriff, and, you know, so if any of the students, I mean, if you were interested in some of the history, there was one, I think that meeting where the sheriff was there, and there's different stakeholders, that one was a good one to listen to, to kind of get that pulse of what was going up there. So, yeah, it's a good thing that you guys have your eye on, because...
Okay, so, Paul, we know you're going to do great things. Can, can we move on to budget now?
I know, we matched today.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and President Bibi. I feel like this is a little bit of cruel and unusual punishment that I have to last at this hour and for all of you, and I made a note to myself to revise the budget development timeline to ensure I never present after Dr. Nevins. Clearly, I cannot be as exciting as talking about computer games. So, there's my humor for the night. I always try to entertain, but it's hard with this kind of information. Okay. Yep, that's right. Just can't see it, but that's right. Can you make it any bigger? No, okay. They'll just squint really hard. Okay. So, this is our second round for the 1718 budget development process of discussing the budget. As a reminder, we're bringing it in small chunks to make it a little more digestible. Last time, we looked at the revenues. This time, we're going to look at the expenses. This is just the unrestricted general fund, and I really want to emphasize this is a, this is just a draft. We're very early on bringing things to the boards, so you have a chance to look at them as often as possible, but these numbers will change, they are changing. One of the reasons why they're changing is because we're going through the BRAC meetings, reviewing budget at this time, so those meetings occur, we find things that need to be changed, and then we, we build them into the budget in every way, whether it's an adjustment up or down. So, these will keep changing. I don't expect huge dramatic changes. You know, we do have the bulk of the budget built into here, but, but they'll keep moving around. So, this is the, and first of all, I want to point out, these red numbers are good. Usually, usually red is bad, but on the expense side, this variance is showing that there's a decrease in our expenses, which is what we are looking for this year, and that's highlighted by the red. So, red's showing that we did have a decline from 1617 adjusted budget to the 1718. I don't know if anyone wants me to walk through all of these individually, probably not. I'm going to assume you don't. I'm going to jump to the ones that I find most pertinent. So, if you look at the details of the variance, these specific details tie up to the variance above of the 1.4 million. So, what this is trying to show is, you know, specific examples of why we have a decline or an increase under each of those major objects. Okay? So, it's very common for us to have these first couple of items under salaries, which are increases for folks that are increasing on their step, or they've reached a longevity increment. Every year, we have salary increases like that, so those are built into here. But additionally, something we don't normally have is we have the SERP, so all the folks that are retiring that will not be replaced, we have the savings of their salaries built in here as well. So, this is an unusual year where the combination of those increases and decreases are a decrease for us. Normally, these are just increases. Okay, we have built in the School of Extended Learning that we've been discussing, the increase in costs related to that of the 379,000. The next one is the reduction that we have built into the budget for the adjuncts and overloads due to the R enrollment decline. So, we're trying to line up more our enrollment levels and our classes that are being offered. Okay? Summer salary similar. This next one on hourly, even though it's very small, I do want to discuss it because we have built into our budget assumptions that we will be reducing the hourly budget overall by 10%, and the first round of budget files that came back from all the departments resulted in this $1,000 increase, basically not the 10% decrease we were, we need to work towards. So, again, this is a draft form. Now that we have all that compiled, we know we need to go back and work on that, but our plan is to stay within our budget assumptions and decrease the hourly budgets overall by 10% across the college. That doesn't mean across the board cuts for departments, just to clarify. It means we will go out and find areas where it's most applicable to decrease, not do just draconian cuts. Okay?
And what would that 10% number be roughly?
Gosh, you know, I don't remember off the top of my head. I apologize. I can look it up for, oh, wait, I may have it on the assumptions, do I? Let me look. Nope, I don't, but I'll get it for you. It'll be in the assumptions when we, when we get there. Okay. Moving on, things we've talked about many times, we have the Sturs and Pers rate increases. We've been expecting that. Health and welfare, we did get the new medical and dental, all the benefit rates back from Sisk, our company that handles that for us, and unfortunately, they have an increase, but it's about a 5% increase, which is not too bad. There's other schools that are getting more like 10 and 12% increases. We are pretty lucky that in our pool, our increases each year are quite small compared to other, other industries, other sectors, so that's, it's not good news, but it could be much worse than it is for other districts. This next decrease on payroll taxes of 419,000, that's just a decrease because we have, we're going to have less, less staff, less faculty, so it's just in line with the folks that are retiring that won't be replaced. The payroll taxes come down as well, it's just like salaries. This, SERP annuity payments, the 871,000, those are payouts that we are making to our folks that took the SERP and are retiring, so those payments will occur over the next five years, so that's that piece. And then a couple of other dismissed ones, some reductions that have been going through the normal budget process on the non-labor side of 263, and some miscellaneous ones. Any questions on this? I'm going to go through more, but if there's any specific to this all, take them now.
In the past, when we've had these preliminary budgets, the Pers and Sturs never, ever ended up looking like budget, and part of that, of course, we understand. I mean, how comfortable are you with these?
Are you referring to at the end of the year, the Pers and Sturs didn't look? Yeah. It's, it's very hard for us to project Pers and Sturs, and part of the reason why is some, some faculty, for example, you assume they're in Sturs, but they're actually in Pers because they came from a different position, and they can elect that. And adjuncts is another one where it makes it very hard for us to project exactly how much we'll pay out, because we, we budget adjuncts kind of in a, in a pool. But overall, I feel like in a combined, they're, they're pretty accurate. They may not be perfect between Pers and Sturs, but that cost that we're going to experience, I feel pretty, pretty comfortable with.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would like to say something about the Cal Pers and Cal Sturs. If you, if you note, you just heard a presentation from Paul Jurel on the School for Extended Learning, and that, the cost of the startup of that, 99,000, but you look at the Cal Sturs and Pers, look what that is taking away from the mission of the college to be able to fund those increases. And this is the beginning. I mean, this is going to get continually worse going forward. So, I say that for trustee Abud is on, if there's anything that comes along that can help with getting some state funding for these increases, just let us know. We'll, we'll jump into it with both feet. I know that, you know, this is not just an educational dilemma. I mean, this is, this is all state entities and agencies, and we really need to have a coalition of folks to gather around solving this problem, because it's just going to get worse.
And our projections about those increases were much worse before we did the SERP. I mean, these are not as bad as they were if we would have had the same staffing levels, yeah. Yeah. Peter?
Just to that point, that would be one, one example of why the, why connections with the CCLC would be important, because I'm sure they're working on that. I mean, this, this is that kind of a problem that's going to require us all to, to work on it. I'm, I'm interested in the SERP annuity payment of essentially 872 for the next five years. How does, how does that work?
So, the way that works is the folks who took the SERP, they will receive 70% of their pay, and they have a choice of how they receive that, either over five years or a longer time period over their life. That isn't really, that doesn't impact us. Keenan, the third party, has us pay them over five years, and the reason why they choose that is because most people pick the five years. So, we have to make those 70% of all those folks' salaries payments to Keenan over five years. So, that's how that works.
And so, they receive 70% over the next five years in addition to the retirement benefit?
Their pension, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that makes sense?
That was the incentive.
That was the incentive, yeah. Not so much our incentive, but their incentive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, if, can you pull up the, I don't know what it's called, Liz, but the, the next one that looks... next one that looks like this, it's probably the right there. Yeah, I think that's it, yeah. Okay. Here we are with our first look at everything rolled together. As I mentioned, we looked at revenues last time, these are the same revenues, we haven't any, any adjustments to those at this point, um, but you're able to see those revenues, and you're able to see the expenditures that we just, just discussed, the 94 million, and now I wanna talk about the transfers, 'cause that's the last piece we haven't, haven't discussed yet. So down there, which I always wish I had a pointer up here, but, yeah, down there in the transfer section, we have a, a change from what we've normally listed for transfers, and I'm gonna go into this in, in much more detail when we get to the presentation point, and I have my whole PowerPoint ready for you. I'll, I'll show you my slide on, on what exactly the transfers are, what they've been in the past, and what we're projecting they're gonna be for seventeen eighteen. But in a nutshell, the transfers we just have, that is a, our normal transfer to support the, the children's center. Normally, we have other transfers such like, such as transfers to the construction fund for deferred maintenance, you know, for any type of emergencies that come up with construction across the campus. We've removed that transfer. Uh, we also typically have a transfer to the equipment fund for program review, uh, resource requests, we don't have that transfer in there. We also often have a, typically have a transfer for equipment needs and IT refresh needs, we don't have that transfer in here. Um, so those are some major differences that we're showing here for the seventeen eighteen budget in, uh, keeping in mind the deficit that we have, trying to get that deficit as low as possible. So we're ending the year of seventeen eighteen with a $5 million deficit, up a little bit from the last time we, we did a projection of four and a half million. And again, they, these are very preliminary, I do expect all the numbers to change when we get the May revise, because we don't have the May revise on the revenue side yet. I don't have any indication of what those numbers are gonna be yet. When we get them, we'll build them in and present them as, as quickly as we can, so that will be very important. And on the expense side, like I mentioned, we're continuing to refine, but the bulk of the salaries and whatnot, which is most of our budget are, are in here, so.
Just one quick comment, you know, we get all kinds of, uh, people that are speculating about what kind of revenues we're gonna be seeing, um, in the May revise, and sometimes those are accurate, and sometimes they're not. We are going to base all of our, our, uh, projections on the actual May revise numbers. You know, that, that's obviously the safest way to go on that, so we're not gonna get involved in, in speculation or anything else. I mean, some, sometimes people wanna know if, if we're considering that, we're not, we're, we're just going with what the state's giving us.
The only other point I wanted to make about the assumptions is that at this point in time, there's been no changes to our FTS assumptions for next year, so that's kind of a, a, a big important one I wanna keep focusing on, since our FTS is so, uh, critical for us right now with us trying to stabilize. So there's no changes from the last time I was up here discussing that. And that's, that's all I have, a lot more to come. The next time I'm up here, you'll be seeing all of those lovely slides on all the different funds, um, and you'll get to see it three times, so one more time than normal, and hopefully enough time to digest and ask questions, and, and those'll come in draft form, because we're bringing them so early, so the first draft will be a, a draft, and by the time we get to June 22nd for final approval, it'll be, uh, you know, your tentative budget will be complete and ready for approval.
Excellent.
We appreciate that, Lindsay. Um, I have a question, but do anyone, does anyone else?
I just appreciate that you mentioned that you're, the hourly, you know, it's gonna be looked at, because, I mean, if everybody's looked at student services at the beginning of the semester, and so much of the hourly staff support the classified staff, and it's gonna be tough, but I trust that you guys are looking, like you said, not at a, across the board, but looking where the impact is, and, yeah.
My question, I wanted to circle back to the difference in the transfers. Uh, my recollection is our typical transfer has been for equipment and construction, three and a half million?
Uh, no, more like two million. Three and a half would be including the equipment.
Say that again?
Uh, your, probably three and a half number would include money for equipment as well.
Yeah, equipment and construction, three and a half.
Yes, that's correct.
So my question has to do with the longer-term effort to balance. I'm assuming it's not sustainable not to do transfers for equipment and construction over the longer term. Um, so in some sense, we're being optimistic by saying five million as opposed to eight and a half million. Because whatever number we land on ultimately, I'm only using the historic number there, we still have to figure out how to get to that balance.
Yeah, and just keep in mind that I will be presenting as another, another piece of this, uh, most likely in June, another five-year projection, an updated project, projection. So that'll be a good time to look at that, and what are we building in our assumptions for our long-term transfers?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll talk about it more, definitely.
Yeah, we're, we're expecting projections this year, that will be good. Okay, well, thank you, Lindsay. Um, we do appreciate seeing this more than once and your explanation as well. It's good, it's clear. One more thing on the agenda, which is, as Craig was interested in specifically, the, um, what's it called, items for future board consideration. This is the topics thing, so anybody? Yeah, there is a long list at the end here, but some stuff just doesn't come off, I think, like budget updates.
Do you already know what you're gonna put in, what you're gonna add to it for...
No, I'm looking for new ones, if anybody wants a new one, um, that we don't have on here. If not, then we'll be...
I have one.
Okay, just under the line there.
Um, and I, I've talked with Anthony a little bit about this, but what the college can do for voter turnout in the city election coming up this November.
What?
Yeah. And I, can I say one thing? I made a mistake earlier during my legislative update, and I didn't mention Cornelia was at our lobby visit too, and a faculty member from PE whose name escapes me right now, but she was there as well, and they were both very helpful.
Yeah, it was Sally.
Sally, yeah.
And then I just was wondering, Angie, do you, or do we wanna, do you want us to send you, like, do you wanna take tally of who's going? I know sometimes we, like, all go to one and didn't go, and would've been like, oh, well, if you would've gone, I would've rescheduled my dinner to go to that and, to the event, so that most of us can cover all of these. I know I'm covering the ones on the fifth, but do you want us, I mean, is that too much? Do we care, should we just show up, and if we, they were there? I don't wanna ask you to, some type of consensus to see who's attending these and how we cover them. You know, we all have our calendars and their... If nobody was attending the pinning ceremony, then I could take a day off and go, but I know Mary Ann, like, that's been on her calendar, and I know, like, the GED, I've gone the last couple of years, and then Marty. So anyway, that's just kind of as a something for you guys to think, if you want to.
Make sure this is all covered, is what you're saying?
Yeah, 'cause I know this is important to us, and...
And to the people who are doing it.
And sometimes we just don't coordinate, and we're like, oh, you know, I don't know.
That's a good idea.
But I don't wanna create a Google Doc nightmare either, 'cause I don't like, I don't like Google Docs, but anyway, somehow we can...
Retirement reception, which is tomorrow. How many people can go? Five, I'm gonna go. Three, four, five. So I think we're pretty good on that. The next one is the 30th, the TAP recognition. Anybody got that? Mary Ann? Craig?
I can probably do that.
Scholarship reception, West Campus. One, two, three, four, okay. Uh, outstanding student reception on May 5th. Veronica, I know you mentioned that.
After that one, yeah.
Yeah, I can do that too, I think. Faculty Association spring party, who's gonna go to that? So, anybody else can? Craig?
I get to go to the Wellbees, that'd be good.
The Feiju, yeah?
It'll be like home, old homework.
Okay, anyone else moves, gets some free time there, that, that's a fun party. ADN pinning ceremony, Mary Ann, you said you would go? Commencement, we're all going. College Promise Luncheon, um, I'm going to that. Anyone else? College Promise Program Luncheon? Mary Ann? That's on the 15th of May, so we're after commencement now. GED graduation, Veronica said she can go to that. And the classified, this is the Classified Employee Breakfast. Anthony hosts, you get free breakfast.
Burrito?
Free breakfast? I could try for that maybe.
Okay, it sounds like we've got a turnout for that. Remember your assignments, guys?
Thank you, Marsha.
Okay.
Were you the only one going to the GED?